Welcome everybody to the New Bern Board of Alderman Meeting, July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. At this time, the prayer tonight will be given by Mayor Pro Tem, Bobby Boyd. Bobby Boyd, Bobby Ashton. Alderman? Alderman?
We're trying to get you there. Mayor, members of the board, keeping with tradition of having city employees to offer our prayer, I would like to call up a New Bern Police Officer, Jared Woody, for prayer tonight. Jared joined the New Bern Police Department in January of this past year, and has offered to give our prayer for us. To the podium, Jared, yes, thank you.
Father, we come before you this evening as one community, God. We thank you for giving us another day here on this earth. Another day to wake up and breathe in your goodness, God. We ask you to be with us all in the days ahead and our daily endeavors, regardless of our occupation or, I guess, hobbies or jobs. We thank you for everything you're doing in each and every one of our lives, and for the good health that you've provided us, the ability to make it here tonight. We ask you to just continue to give us wisdom in everything that we face, from daily decisions to job opportunities and just everything that we may come upon. We ask you to bless this time tonight that we're gathered together. Let it be for the good, and we ask you for safe travels as we travel home again from this meeting. In your precious name, we pray, amen.
Amen. Would you all men pledge allegiance to the flag of our country? Our pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ben Park, heard what you called the "roll."
You got me off mute.
Alderman Bingle, here. Alderwoman Harris.
Here.
Alderman Astor.
Here.
Mayor Outlaw.
Here.
Alderman Kinsey.
Here.
Alderman Bass.
Here.
Alderman Odom.
Here.
Okay. At this time, we have requests of petitions of citizens, and tonight Alderman Bernard White would like to come forward.
Good evening. On behalf of the citizens of New Bern, Dr. Phil area especially, I come down here to ask questions, and questions do not withstand any white. I know y'all have a certain process about how y'all do things and what's going on. I looked at the program, I think last week, and I saw when they were still talking, we still have this flip-flopping, going back and forth where people don't understand the finance of the fifteen thousand, fifteen million, now they're talking about eight million, eight point something billion, and five million from the insurance. But that's something that a lot of people don't understand, and those are some things that I would like to have written out so when I'm talking to a group of people that I can give them something definite from what was going on, what's happening down here. The other thing is that there's a lot of things that should be happening that may, from my point of view, is not happening. I feel that we all are adults, supposed to be. We're supposed to know right from wrong. Most of us were taught that. We know what our job, our job is, and I know y'all are supposed to know what your job is. And your job is to work for the people, support the people. But yet, it's trying to make good decisions, to help make good decisions for the citizens. So my main thing is, my main job is to fight for the people that I love, especially in-laws, they come first, and try to do what's right. As Pauline Teller used to say, it's always good to do right, never good to do wrong. And he was right about that. But we, in this country, we was raised to try to do right. Well, we wouldn't try to do right, just to do right. Why is it so many people in this country get a kick out of just doing wrong? I mean, if you, we go down and look at anything, or look at a book, or look at the Ten Commandments, all of us can study this and see a whole lot of people that's not following any of those guidelines. One of the main things that we should be trying to do, when we grew up, the older people, when you grew up, it was in school. Why rely on the devil, I call it the devil, to take it out of school? It never hurt anything. It helped, helped a lot of kids, probably helped me a little bit, because I wasn't one of those that was that easy to get along with. You know, so I'm here basically for the Stanley White program, and I'd just like to have more information on him. And I'm one of the people that don't bug you that much, but when I come to you, I come to you. So I just need that, so I can go back and give it back to the groups that I meet with. Only down here, I wasn't coming, I was only down here because my people called me and asked me to come. I said a long time ago, I don't attend meetings unless someone asks me. They ask me to come, I'm coming, but I'm not changing my agenda. My agenda is to try to make sure that everything go as smooth as it can go, and that we can receive what we need to receive. And Duffield Field has been without for a long time, and each time I would say something about it to the previous mayors that we've had, and they would say we run out of money. Why do we always run out when you come to Duffield Field? And I still disagree with that clapping, because I told people when they come down here, this is their living room. Y'all are the people that are supposed to entertain them, and if they stay here all night, y'all supposed to stay here all night, and I don't want to stay all night, and I know y'all don't either, so thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman White. Okay, this time we're gonna go to the consent agenda.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, will you approve the consent agenda?
Second. Motion second, it gives their discussions. Seeing none, so have a, all in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Aye.
All right, okay. It's got aye number six.
Thank you, Mayor, aye number six is a public hearing on rezoning of two four zero nine Oaks Road. And again, if this is, this will be a public hearing, we'll open it up for the public hearing, and then after closing, there'll be any kind of questions or answers for staff to address at that point. Also, if the board wishes to adopt the rezoning of two four oh nine, they would need to first adopt a zoning consistency statement. If they do not wish to rezone it, then they need to pass a statement of zoning inconsistency. So we want to make sure to get that clear. The public hearing was originally noticed on the fourteenth of April, two thousand and twenty, and has been continued twice due to some restrictions. We also had a public hearing, and since then, there's a desire of one of the Aldermen who felt that they did not fully understand that the vote at the time wished for this to come back up because of the error. We discussed that during the meeting, and we thought it best just to go back through the process, do the public hearing over, so that we could fully go through the process again, everyone could be heard, and all the folks who are in the public could be heard as well. So at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Ujiri. We're gonna go over real quickly the rezoning request, and then we'll be happy to answer any questions after the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeManger. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. We all know the details of this one, but I'll go over again real quickly. Request to rezone the property at two four oh nine Oaks Road. Its existing zoning is R six S, which means a single-family residential detached zone. The proposed change is to C four, a neighborhood business zoning district. It's a small acre, it's a small tract, about a quarter of an acre. Historically, the building had a commercial use on it, but it's currently standing vacant. There's your site right there. Looking up Oaks Road, the site is on the left-hand side. If you drove by it today, you'd see that it was colored, it's been painted red. Surrounding zoning, you'll see the yellow is all the R six S. Across the street is C three. The site is in blue, requesting a C four, and that blue that you see down to the right is a commercial five zoning. A C four, the request to the C four neighborhood business district, it's, it's, the, the principal use of the land is to provide for the retailing of goods and services to nearby residential neighborhoods. It's a support type of commercial for neighborhoods, for residential neighborhoods. Things like doctors' offices, small convenience stores with no drive-throughs or gas stations, gas pumps, things like that, dentists, lawyers, things like that, small impact commercial neighborhood support type uses. Again, there you go. For clarity, vape shops are not allowed in the C four zoning district. They're only allowed in the commercial three zoning districts. So there's no, with the request to C four, there isn't any idea that a vape shop could be located down that side. And that's pretty much it. So if there's any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them. If not, we'll go right to public hearing.
I do have a question, Mr. Ujiri. And I'm on the Craven County GIS map right now, but if you want to go back to where you showed the commercial property.
This one.
It was brought to my attention today, and I did go online, that the lot that you show as commercial is listed in GIS as a vacant residential that's directly in front of the proposed change. And the G I map, land use description is vacant residential tract. And then, let's see. And then the other one that you've got in pink there shows as a residential tract as well. Is that possible, that just a mistake?
Maybe they're looking at existing, this is not a zoning map. So existing land use can be different than the zoning.
So it doesn't update it to show that it would be commercial?
The county is not integrated to ours on the map.
Okay. So somebody could have petitioned, had it changed, and then it would be?
I think, yeah, we're getting the existing uses that's on the ground today, so the county would go by and take a survey of what's there.
I see.
And that's what they would notice, the existing land use is residential. Though our zoning map may call it something totally different, could be industrial, could be commercial, could be residential. But the existing land use is the only thing that the county has on their website. They don't have our zoning overlay in the county.
Residential is allowed in a commercial?
It is allowed, absolutely, commercial zone.
Just, just, I wanted some clarification on that, thank you.
Jeff.
Yes.
Could you again state to me, what was the distance between the residential homes on both sides of that?
On both sides of the proposed?
On each side of that parcel, yes.
Yeah, I don't really.
Was it twenty feet, if I'm not correctly, was it the twenty foot?
I think there's homes on both sides.
Yes.
Yes, correct. So it would be, if they're there, you're looking at an eight-foot setback on each side of that, so the twenty feet is a good number, sixteen, twenty feet.
And so that is allowable?
Yeah, that's our existing land use code.
Okay.
Governs setbacks, and they're all in compliance with the existing land use code. So we're mixing site development, which would be dealing with setbacks, with proposed uses, which is zoning, which is why we're here today.
Okay.
And they'll have new set of zoning setbacks with the new, with the C four request if they choose to tear down the building or make significant changes to.
And another question, adequate parking.
Yeah.
I know that's right off of the street, so is that's already been pre, that's approved as well?
No, I mean, at this point, we can't look at the proposed use right now. I mean, at the existing, or what they're proposing, we're looking at zoning. Parking appears that it can work, haven't done the real detail. We'd have to see an engineer drawing that we could really scale off and make sure that, but I think they're required to, to parking spaces, which looks like it could fit. But that will come through site plan review, and we'll look at that.
Okay.
Alderman Nardle.
Jeff, just a couple of questions. I'm not sure if you have the answers to these or not, but I'm assuming the applicant is here because this has historically been a commercial-type use. Your presentation said, as well as the gist maps. Do we know when it lost its non-conforming? I don't know what word I'm looking for, but the use of it.
Yeah.
Do you know when we lost that?
I don't know the exact date, but I know since Florence that it has been vacant, and we have a six, essentially a six-month window for that. And it may have been vacant before that, quite honestly. It hasn't been, that's really up to the applicant when we get in a situation like this. The applicant needs to show us, there's a certain section of our code, our non-conforming code, that lists out different scenarios and what each landlord needs to do to kind of grandfather in their existing uses and non-conforming situations. So we don't really do all that homework and all that legwork until someone says, hey, I've been working here, this has been an active business going on. But if that doesn't come up, we just treat it like it's been vacant for longer than a hundred and eighty days, and it needs to come into compliance by existing codes.
Okay, and then my last, my last question, I don't know whether it would be for you or Attorney Davis, does a non-conforming use transfer with ownership?
Yes.
So if it was a vacant property when it was acquired by the current owner, then it would be considered the current existing zoning, which would be residential, correct?
Aye. Yeah, it still goes back to the code and the different criteria that you need to meet. So it needs to be an active, actively going, happening, the business needs to still be performing, and it's non-conforming state, or it has to be actively up for sale the entire time. There can't be any gaps in that in a situation like this. I can't think of anything else in a building situation where it would apply. But those are the two major things that we look at.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, anything on board this time? Seeing none. Open a public hearing. Anybody that would like to come forward, will come forward, make any comments they would like to make, or ask questions. At this time, please give us your name and address for the record.
Mike Duffy, one twenty-one Morning Dog Trail, New Bern, North Carolina. That's one block off of Oaks Road. Sorry to jump in, but I think I can clear up one of the questions. I have some handouts here for the, maybe you guys can share these one, but maybe we have enough. This is both the GIS mapping and the New Bern Interactive Zoning Map. And when you light up the, well, it is colored orange, as shown on that show. When you light up the interactive, it shows vacant residential. And it is a separate lot from where the business is. Hey, it's up there. I have a copy of the question. Here it is. Anybody else want this? I know it's hard to read, but I'll text it to anybody if it comes up much clearer. I don't know, keep in mind it's here. Everybody okay with this? Okay, all right. Yeah, sorry for that. Just want to make some more points here. Now, this has been back and forth a lot of times, and different people have appeared and so on and so forth, so there's nothing wrong with a little bit of confusion or misunderstanding and so on and so forth. One thing that I heard here when I watched all of this on television is that it had been rezoned at one point in time. I seriously doubt that. I think what you've seen on Oaks Road, and this is opinion, what I give you on paper is gonna be fact, but this is opinion, is the result of no zoning under Craven County. And Craven County, as most of you know, has very, very good zoning. The only thing I could find is height restrictions around the airport and Cherry Point Airfield. And that's what you're really seeing. So I don't think it was ever, it was in commercial use because there was no zoning. And that goes back to, I believe, starting in nineteen, way back, and then the property was first sold in nineteen seventy-two, but it was under the same ownership for a very long time. And then it was sold four more times before this recent sale, and sometimes twice in one year. So I doubt that it was continuing. And one of the owners, for instance, was Affordable Home before, this gentleman was Affordable Homes and Rents, right? Am I correct? Okay, thank you. So that's that. So then at that point, when the city first instituted zoning, okay, they zoned it residential, R six, okay? R six, that's residential. Now, I don't believe that this was an accident, because if you look at the map that was presented, the commercial properties are far away from it, they're much larger. And in fact, you know, if you look at the actual uses, then, you know, we have an empty lot across the street, that's what it's being used for now, which is what your actual standard calls for in the end, that you have to make a finding that it's consistent with existing uses and with adjacent homes, which it is not, which it clearly is not, okay? Because we've got, going towards National, we've got five in a row residential homes, then we've got a residential lot, and then a church is the next one. Going towards Simmons, we have seven in a home, single-family, in a row. And then there is a commercial lot, but that's owned by the city, and it's not in use. So when you look at the actual uses, it does not support this at all. Now, this is another packet. We're gonna keep one. This is fact, this is from City Board visits, and from your package. Okay, this is not my opinion anymore. Okay, fair enough. I really do, it hurts me to come here like this more than it hurts you. As you know, I've always supported you guys in the past as much as I possibly can. This time, I do have a board in the fight, and the board is gonna fight. So if you look at the first page, okay, this is the intent of R six residential zoning. And then if you go down to the bold face, to prohibit commercial and industrial use of the land, to prohibit other use which would substantially interfere with the development or continuation of residential structures in the district. Now go down to C, to encourage the discontinuance of existing uses that would not be permitted as new uses in the district, which is exactly what we're talking about tonight. The other thing about this is that's important to note, is that if you do this, all the controls that were on under the existing uses, prior use, are gone. The building can be expanded, it can be used to anything you want, it can be sold tomorrow, if any number, any number of things can happen, okay? And don't forget, you have no control over special use permits. You don't have any review over that, you know, so. And we've already seen that, you know, the entire front of the property, most of the, you know, is not something that would, you know, congruent to being able to use this property for a residential home, has been paid. And now literally, we have the twenty-figure, that came from me, from Google Earth, that's twenty feet, but given the driveway that's already been placed there, it's much, much closer than that, so we're already most of it. And that's the distance between the buildings, not the land, the actual physical building. So is that fair to that person? Would you want that next to your home? And by the way, to me, looking at it, I mean, other than with my motor scooter or my bicycle, I could get out of there, but I don't see how I'm gonna get out of there, backing out there onto Oaks Road. They're gonna have to go down the driveway and back down. We're not taking advantage of the display thing, I'll pass up some of these. So. Now, I only have a couple. Here's one. This shows the residential homes, you know, on both sides. And the existing, I guess fairness, I'll call it store, home, whatever, but I understand that's the way it was used. So, and I want to go on to the second page in what I gave you. And this is the, from your packet tonight, as to how you make the decision on whether it's consistent or not, okay? C four neighborhood district is deemed to be compatible with the developed designation in the land use. Now, this part's a thing, now I'm gonna give my view, that's fact, that's, you know. Does that mean that any developed area that has any commercial activity whatsoever? And this is a pretty big zone on the Sealeman map, I think Mark will tell you, this goes almost as far as National. That backed property can be rezoned, commercial one? As far as, you know, the fact it was commercial in the past, that's irrelevant now. That's used stop, and it no longer matters, okay? So, and again, bear in mind, it's gonna be taken off. Now, the second thing is number two on your, and this is in your packet. C four neighborhood is compatible with adjacent zoning classifications. It's not. All the adjacent ones are different. The one in the back is Forest, the one's next door, clearly, that. And as I said, going five lots and, six lots in one direction, and seven in the other. It's not consistent whatsoever. And the C four, and then third, the C four neighborhood business district is compatible with existing uses, okay? And we've shown now that even the one across the street in the records, now if it's a mistake, it's a mistake. But you know what, somebody said at one point that the zoning of this property, of R six, could have been a mistake, which is a blanket thing or something like that. Pretty unlikely, when you think about it, you know, right? So is it, or is it not? I don't know what the intent was. I don't have any records going back that far, I don't know if anybody does, to one react. But as I said, on the interactive map, if you look at it, I've documented that for you. I apologize, it's hard to read, but I will text it. I think Serena verified, she's already got a text, it's much clearer on the text. And that's about it. Remains to be said, this is opinion again. I think anybody can see that Oaks Road is a fragile neighborhood, period, okay? I know I had a little back and forth with City Attorney, very, very professional, very, very polite. He was correct that, you know, the lot near my home, one of the lots near my home that I was concerned about is covered, covered by a covenant. I looked into it pretty deeply. It's not mentioned on the deed, but it is in the thing, and it seems like it would pass along. But the bigger property in the back, which is the reason I bought the property and went, you know, to contract online without even coming here, is not covered by that covenant. So it is a concern to me, you know, so it's a direct concern to me. But I can also say, and again, this is opinion, but I'm pretty, a pretty good distance from there, okay? And yet, I was able to buy a nice, single-family home attached with beautiful park-like land around it, hardwood floors, cathedral ceilings, in excellent shape, because the guy who owned it before me was a handyman, for fifty-three thousand dollars in two thousand and fifteen, and they gave me back fifteen hundred dollars to his closing. So it does affect property values all through that area, and I think that's just plain observation. And the one question was about curb cuts, okay? You know, whether curb cuts were approved to do that driveway or parking area, or whatever it is. You know, so, you know, so. Well, I'm the only one who's fortunate enough in that area to even have curbs. You know what I'm saying? I think Traffic Creek is the only area in that whole neighborhood that even has curbs. So I'll leave it at that. It's a fragile neighborhood, I don't see any advantage in breaking it. I think it will hold us back in fixing other areas that desperately needed it, and we'd appreciate your cooperation in trying to continue to upgrade this area the best we can, you know, so. I mean, I spent, you know, I wanted to stay, so I spent about forty-five thousand dollars fixing mine after the flood. A lot of people were impacted, but, you know, so, pretty much everything's come back. People are, you know, trauma's faced, so. Appreciate your time, and all your work is always in the past. And again, I regret having to come here on a negative for a change of picture.
Thank you.
Okay, come forward, anybody that would like to make some comments about this.
Are there any questions?
We came here two weeks ago to discuss this same issue. And as my friend, Mr. Nasen, answered that, I said, Nasen, do you have any supporters and any people who would support the proposal on the zoning? And he made me a list, and I would like to hand these. If I might. Yes, these are, hey, these are people who would support the orders being changed. And the first page is, their phone numbers are people who would be in support and who had expressed an interest in being here tonight. The other pages attached are people who did not say they could come, but who did say they supported the change so that they could have a convenience store there. Now, the warriors never trust anybody or anything, so. Had my wife called some of these people at random, this Had my wife called some of these people at random this afternoon just to confirm what they said, and the, the, some of the comments were, at the, the, some of the comments were from Darius Webb, he recalled one forty-four, said he supported the convenience store. Kevin Grendwee at one fifty-eight supported it and said he would trust to be here. The, the one comment from Kenneth Robertson was, he is a good man, we need more like him, he would always help. The, the, my wife even wrote down the ones we could not get hold of and we had a voicemail and see, some were not answered. J R Miller on the third page and his phone number there said, yes, he would support it. And the, my friend Patrick Trout is here and asked him if he would speak briefly. The Jack Keone, he was called one forty-seven and likewise said, yes, he would support it. And Ricky Lamb was a voicemail and the, so was David Omen. The most talkative was a lady named Marsha Jackson, who I think lives across the street from this project. And she said, yes, this used to be a super stop and, and she has, lives across the street in Sunnyside and we, she says, we need one in the area, we need a convenience store because there's one at the end of the street up near New Bern and then one down close to Palace, but we need one that's easy to market. And the fifth cop also on the list said he would support it, as did Deborah Gibson. We had confirmation of those people this afternoon. Now, the, there are some other issues here that I will, get into, but they involve the, I think the, kind of the legalities of the, and statistics involving what violations there have been, not only for this place or for Mr. Nassar's other two places, but the number of violations in comparison to other places. So we would like to have more accurate statistics if we could get. Now, with that, if I may, I'd like to call Mr. Trout and maybe any others who want to.
Good evening, everybody. Look, this gentleman right here moved here about twenty, twenty-five years ago, got six kids, he owns two or three businesses, he's got two kids right now that goes to college, one that goes to East Carolina, comes home every night, works in a store, four hours a night, goes back to East Carolina. He's trying to run a law about him business, he pays four, what, three or four light bills to the city in New Bern, three or four property tax to the building. This is what you call an American dream. Every one of y'all started from somewhere. I grew up as a, well, not trying to be talking y'all to death in here, I grew up as an orphan, raised in Trent Court. I am a federal employee. This man is trying to make a living, a lot of obstacles getting people's way. This is what you want in your city. What, two years ago, Mayor, you stood right out there on that, that circle, this is what you need to rebuild your city with. This man has helped a lot of people, he's helped the organization that I deal with, Ms. Bingle has helped that organization, she might not know it, but I deal with the 503C, we help a lot of underprivileged youths. This guy's helped me, you know, several ways. He said he didn't wanna be publicized by it. I've been in this community my whole life. I see Mayor Outlaw in the gym a lot, he don't know who I am. Ms. Bingle, I played basketball with your husband for years. Buddy and Sabrina, I mean Buddy and your little daughters were little. I've been in this commu, I live in Vanceboro now. I came out here tonight instead of going running ten miles, I still, still an athlete. But this man right here is a law-abiding citizen. All these marches y'all have had in the last two or four weeks, this is what it's about right here. This is what it's about. This man's livelihood, he's already invested a lot of money. If you go by Sunnyside, a lot of people, that, that neighborhood was ravished during the hurricane. Am I correct, Mayor? Okay, you shook your head right. Okay. This mayor, this man has invested a lot of money putting gas pumps up, that's not free, okay? He invested money in buying that property to do something. It looks like y'all would be more supportive of helping this man. This man's doing something positive, something to hold him back. Now, like I said, the American dream, this man from, came from another country, came over here, putting money in this community, like he employs several different people. I'm not cutting these other people down, but this, like, I say, give this man a chance because a lot of people don't wanna help people. That's what it's about, to help people, your fellow man, black, blue, green or white, no matter where they're coming, came from, it's where they're trying to go. That's all I got to say, y'all have a good night, thank you.
Thank you, Patrick.
James Woods, nineteen zero three Country Club Road. I've spoken several times on this matter, once again, if we start cherry picking where we're gonna put commercial and residential properties, then I'm gonna end up having a re, a commercial property next to my house because it's a vacant lot. If you've never driven down Oak's Road, or if you have driven down Oak's Road, you know Oak's Road is not wide enough for most, most cars to get down there. I've delivered on Oak's Road for years. I drove a UPS truck and delivered Oak's Road. That business used to be an upholstery business, maybe twenty years ago. Across the street diagonally from it, you could pull off the road and get to those commercial businesses. Further down the street where Mr., the guy was talking about, staff was talking about, you could pull off the street to get to those businesses. But this right here, you can look at this picture and look, you're right there against the street. That is, that should be a safety issue, let alone, I don't care what you're trying to put there, how are you gonna get out into the traffic? We've already had a child killed on Oak's Road. So all this is, is gonna, in my opinion, if, whatever happens here, once that become commercial property, and if it becomes a convenience store, not saying that it will, you're gonna have kids walking to there and traffic, that road is not wide enough for children to walk on, let alone drive, please leave it. If you look at it on either side of that, that building, it's nothing but houses. It's an R for a reason, it's a R six for a reason. Please leave it as R six and let's close this out. This is like the fourth time we've dealt with this issue.
Burnaway eighteen eleven Durham Street. I live over that area. Excuse me. I live over in that area, I've been living over there for over forty-some years. When I first moved over there, if anybody had told me how it changed, I would not have believed them. I've always thought it was residential, commercial, like, you know, they got, they got commercial here, residential and everything just went smooth. When late at night come or something, you wanted to go to the store, even one of the buildings that, that y'all have down on the corner of Simmons and Oak's Road, that used to be a filling station. As that was a filling station, sometime at night I would go down and gas up. We also have a filling station on Watson Street and Glen Burnie, Watson Street, Oak's Road and National Avenue. Before that, before that, it was a laundry mat and a store, okay? So, it's all, it's been combined the whole time, I've been there, I wouldn't, couldn't have told you that was anything different because we had what, we had the key store, we had up wholesale shop across the street, we had all that going all the way down. And then the, when they, years ago, when they built this, the church, which was the school, they built that across the street, going around, then Morris Body Shop, they built there, they building there, moved, moved and built their building there. So all that was going all the way down. But if you had told me, I feel this way, if the community in that area is all right with it and, and, and want it, then I don't see anything wrong with it. I do think the gentleman has a right, just like anybody else, to try to open up a business or put a business in an area that will benefit, benefit the people. And when the young person, I'm jumping now, but when the young person got ran over, we had one person that got hit lonely by the, the bridge. And the part, the issue that we talked about and that I talk about all the time was that, and I still believe it today, we had sidewalks going down there, I don't think a little, little kid would been in the street, you know, so other than that, I, I'm in favor of commercial because the community is growing and we did have a terrible time when it flooded over there during the storm.
Hi, good evening. My name's Dorothy Townsend and I live on Harbor Drive off of Oak's Road. I don't think anybody's really debating whether or not this gentleman is, you know, wanting to start a business or he's law-abiding, it really comes down to safety and the community. That picture that's up there right now is not even what that place looks like right now. It's a big orange building with a big hunk of concrete around it. You've got two houses on either side that have no chance of ever becoming residential. When I moved here, there was big flashing lights in that building that said fish games. It wasn't attractive. If somebody was living next door, I mean, if there's a kid in the bedroom next to that piece of property, they're having flashing lights in their window at night. I mean, that's not right. If you look at those space, I heard somebody say tonight, there's room for two people to park there, two cars. And absolutely, it's a hazard getting in and out of there. There's no place to back out except on the York, to Oak's Road. It's a safety issue. There are people, the only way that they're gonna get there is probably walking. The other gentleman said, people walking from their homes, walking from the elementary school down the street, is that safe? There's no sidewalk there? People fly on that road as it is, I can see somebody backing out of there and you have to be hit by a car immediately. It's just not, it's a matter of safety. In addition to that, let's talk about the aesthetics. Ever since Florence, there has been a real effort to clean up the area. You've seen people investing in their property. I personally, along with a bunch of neighbors, spent every Sunday for three months out there picking up garbage on my own time. We care about the community and I just don't see how this proposed commercial property is going to help the residents of the community. Sure, it might make it easy for them to grab a pack of cigarettes or a six-pack of beer, but what's it gonna do to their property value, to their residential property value? I challenge that, I don't think it's going to help. The people that bought homes in that area have an American dream too. And they are entitled to a safe environment. And I don't think that this property is going to be safe with vehicles or people going in and out of it. Thank you very much.
Good evening, my name's Douglas Townsend, I live at four oh five Harbor Drive. Couple points that I picked up from watching the last meeting, I wasn't able to be here. Chief of Police came up and said the other two properties have more than their fair share of crime around them. I know the people that used to live next door to the place in Sunnyside, they couldn't go out their door at night because of the crime around that building. Is that what we need in the middle of this residential neighborhood? Woodrow needs a lot of things. We do, we need sidewalks. We approached Alderman White years ago because I had my grandkids and I lived three blocks from Neuse Avenue Park. I could not walk there with my grandkids because of having to get over Jackson Smith Creek. If you wanna help the residents of our neighborhood, let's give them something to boost their existence and not somewhere to get cigarettes and beer. My cousin Dottie mentioned the trash cleanup. So after Florence, we started with our street and we took out tons of garbage off our street. Then we started on Oak's Road, we did Simmons, we made it down to Glen Burnie. I asked the person that was working at the store if I could help clean up their property. Now, he said that he has an APC off license. I picked up two bags of beer cans and liquor bottles off of their property. I have a picture on my phone that I could, we can show you the piles of trash that we piled up for the city to come take away from right there. We don't need that on Oak's Road, we don't need that in the middle of the neighborhood. I thank you.
Guys, you probably like, he's back, I'm here. I've decided that somebody up there needs to make a motion for the planning department to buy a new camera because the one that they had doesn't have a wide-angle lens to show the residential nature of that neighborhood there. We keep showing this picture of all the property over here and all this commercial over here. Poor Doug. Buy a new camera. I work hard for the American dream too. And Mr. White, I appreciate your comment, and I appreciate your comment, especially when you said, if the people in that neighborhood don't want it, then we shouldn't vote for it. Also go on record, and I think the city should have an open forum and explain why a legitimate vote to deny this rezoning was reversed. I don't think there's legal grounds to do so, but here we are. I believe the city has an obligation to be transparent, upfront, and as elected officials represent the will of the people. I sat here a couple of weeks ago and saw the Stanley White debate. Transparency and will of the people, that's what we need to be more than ever right now. Residents of Oak's Road, Woodrow do not want spot rezoning of twenty-four oh nine Oak's Road. Mr. Nassar, I will support your other businesses, but not this one. Protect our neighborhood. Gosh, we find out tonight that there's more residential use of this property than we, in this area than we originally thought. Every other request for rezoning at twenty-four oh nine Oak's Road has been denied. What changed? Past commercial use doesn't mean it was in the best interest of residents. The property is not conducive to a business, the lot's too small, it lacks parking and driveway. Were permits obtained to pour all the concrete that was out there? I don't think so. How many variances would be needed to make this a viable commercial opportunity? Nothing's ever really survived there, or all the setback requirements met. Please consider the impact to this residential row of homes. A new drive-through window is there, a brand-new one with a sticker on it. How are you gonna police that? How are you gonna police that? No sidewalks in the area. Intrusive and obnoxious lighting and noise. Even Chief Summers said the last time, police calls to convenience stores owned by the applicant are above normal. A child struck and killed recently in the area. Lots of positive momentum and progress is in the area since Florence in 2018. Allowing this spot zoning and new neighborhood nuisance would be a setback for this area. Would you want this in your neighborhood? Think about the house next door to you. Would you want a convenience store or a commercial operation there? I urge you to deny this request.
Kevin Renwick, seventeen fifteen, New Bern. I just wanna comment on, uh, the concrete that's out there. Uh, in order for me, I'm the one that laid it. In order for me to construct that concrete, I had to write up, the architect, designer, take it up to Nancy, up there at the inspection office, to get it properly for people to park, for people to go around the building and, and easily exit. All this was done by Nancy and me. So, she had, she had to okay it in order for me to dig it up, lay it down, and for it to be over. So, I just had to comment on that because I heard people speaking about the concrete and I'm the one that dig the concrete. And also, uh, everyone can remember Florence and, uh, how devastating it was. There was no stores open for weeks and months. His store remained open. Yeah, you could've got a pack of cigarettes, beer, whatever, but he had other things in there other than that. That was essential to, to my livelihood. So, I just wanted to comment on that. Thank you.
Anybody else would like to come forward at this time?
I live, my name's Darius Webb. I live seventeen eleven, I mean seventeen ten, Eden Street. I come through there on Oaks Road all the time. Kids walk all the way to Sunnyside Store, nighttime, real dark, and a bunch of cars coming through there. You can't even see them. I mean, having a store there would make it more easy. They have somewhere to go get snacks and stuff like that. And like he said about the concrete, it looked good. You can ride up through there, go through a drive-through and all of that. I see, I see no problem with a convenience store right there. That's it.
Anybody else would like to come forward at this time?
I did, um, quick on, as I stated, by apologizing to Matt for the tremendous job that they get, amount of work they did to clean out the, the debris from the flooded homes in the area, it was spectacular. You know, he was out in front of my house once in his own truck on a Sunday to see how it was going over there. So, it was going very well. The other thing, the other questions, the answer to those, I'm not gonna speak about it again, is on the last page of your, uh, of what I gave you. You're actually prohibited from, um, considering the fact that it might or might not be a store, okay? And you're required to make a decision based upon only really three factors, public welfare, public health, and, um, safety, um, so which have been brought up here. That's about it. So, consider you don't know what it's gonna be used for. It's very hard to define a public welfare, any public benefit. So, that's all I can say. And don't forget, you know, on this slide you saw, restaurants are included. Would you want that next to your house? It's a, you know, a restaurant for the truck or something like that? You know, so, okay? Thank you very much.
Okay, seeing that other citizens have luck come forward. Yes, sir?
Just with all in time, all from Watson Avenue. Oaks Road is, the area I know is, is a flood zone. And, uh, I've noticed that it, for years, it's all, Oaks Road right there in that area, always been a commercial area. And, uh, those two houses flooded out. Y'all, I know y'all aware of it, flooded out, is a flood zone. So, I mean, why would property owners, I mean, why would, put commercial, it's condemned. So, why would anyone would wanna build, I mean, you know, rebuild homes right next to, I mean, in that area? It's always been commercial down there. And a store is, like I say, essential, you know, when the flood, when the storm came, the residents in the area were able to get, you know, accessories for their homes, whether it be bread, milk for the children.
Not just beer and cigarettes.
Not just beer and cigarettes.
Many years, we sent our kids or came up there, milk, cereal, pass for our teenage daughters, I mean, just things. Like they said, when we flooded out, we didn't have any stores open. Not only that, you know, there's other things that people needs out of the store besides beer and cigarettes. And the people that's speaking on not doing this, it's the people that does not live in that area, you know, they, the accidents happened on, on the whole nother side when the little boy got killed. It was on a whole nother side. This is not in the area that y'all speaking about now.
And I would say just keep it commercial in that area there and, like I say, maybe a walk, uh, sidewalk area, I mean sidewalk, keep it commercial, it'll help.
Thank you.
Anybody else would like to come forward at this time?
Motion to close public hearing.
Second. Motion and second to close the public hearing, any discussion, seeing none, all, did you have?
Yes.
Close?
After you close.
Okay. All favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same. Motion carries. Alderman?
Looking at that general area, Oaks Road, Sunnyside, all of the little communities within that area was already in a vulnerable position. And after Hurricane Florence come through, devastated a widespread span area over there. That community is now on the rebound. And I myself feel that with any rezoning that comes before me and this Board of Aldermen, my concern is for the safety and welfare of the residents that live within those communities. And I feel that at this point, with this rezoning, yes, whatever business may go there, some gonna want the business and some not gonna want the business. But looking at everything that has been said here with the, all of these public hearings that we've had, I look at it from a resi, a, a business there in that community, you got residential property on both sides of it, and you have, you have, you're gonna have more traffic, you're gonna have excess noise, you're gonna have, as the young lady said, lighting, right, so, being so close to that property, you're gonna have a problem with lighting. And the proximity of the houses on both sides of that property, um, I feel that would be a nuisance as well. Now, my main concern here is that what type of advancements will this rezoning give for public safety? And my main concern is for the safety and welfare of the citizens, the residents that live within that community. And that's what I feel that, I look at for what the residents want. They live there in that community, been living there, some of those residents have been living there for, I can't even say how long. I'm gonna say anywhere from twenty to thirty years and, or more. So, if the citi, if that's what the citizens want for their community, a safe community, a community where you, you're not gonna have children up and down the street, possibly being ran over by a car, hit by a car, trying to get to whatever business is gonna be there. Or in general, what, what do we as a, as a, as a board would want, each individual Alderman up here, as someone stated, within your community? What is your main concern? What is your main concern about any community in this city is our residents, our citizens that live within the community? I could say more, but I'm not gonna say more. I'm pretty sure some other Aldermen may need, want to say something, but I look at it as whatever my constituency, my constituents, my citizens want, that's what I'm trying to do to help them. And I'm gonna look at it from all possible angles, not just be blindsided by one side, I'm gonna look at it from all angles and I take it into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman?
Yes, sir. Mr. Ugiere, this property was sold to the applicant on January twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen. When was the first rezoning application submitted?
I, I don't know that off the top of my head, but it was the same applicant, so it would've been around that, it was in March. Yeah, I was about that.
March of twenty twenty?
No. No, we've done this, this is the third time. Yeah, so we did C three first, which was denied, and then we come back through with this C four request.
Do you, does your staff know what the use was when the current owner took ownership of the property?
It was vacant.
It was vacant?
Correct.
Do you, prior use, do we know what that was before it became for sale on the market?
I do not. Like I said earlier, it's been vacant for a while.
It was commercial.
It was commercial. But, um, I, I believe that, um, well, it was a fitness, somebody that had a workout space.
Yeah, I'm not sure when it was.
But at that point, you know, we did deny the application first time. I guess you waited a year, you could cut, or it changed because he asked for a different zoning.
Different zoning, correct.
Different zoning. But it did sit vacant for a long time.
So, Mr. Davis, my, my concern is, is that a non-conforming property, you said that that would continue on to a new owner, would basically transfer, even if it sat vacant in the interim. My concern from a technicality standpoint, especially with this one, considering what we've had, is when he applied for the initial zoning last year, was within the six months of him purchasing the property, it was denied because of the vape shop concern.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so now, we've gone through that process, we have essentially fixed the zoning on the vape shop situation, so now the applicant is back again. My question is, is, is there a case to be made that the existing use is still into play because we've gone through this process on numerous occasions?
Yes. If, if the facts are, the business, it was used for a commercial purpose and, and continuously marketed, even though it was vacant, the non-conforming situation would continue. What I don't know from staff is why staff proposed the rezoning if those were the facts, because that would've been a typically easy administrative question to answer, and I don't know, I, I don't know. I don't know somebody to check, to check or ask the question, even though it's vacant, was it, was it for sale the whole time? I, I don't know.
Well, regardless of the factor, something sits vacant, if the use is vacant, regardless of who owns it for six months.
If it's not for sale, it's gotta be for sale. Being for sale doesn't penalize the use.
Okay, so the gentleman that sold it.
And for sale, but I mean, listed on MLS, publicly for sale, not in my heart of hearts, it's for sale, but objectively for sale.
Knowing the gentleman, you know, I mean, they, I don't know that a sign was in front of it, maybe a little one inside the store, but.
Yeah.
The, uh, it sat vacant after the storm, so from, when was the storm? September of eighteen? So, he wasn't doing anything in there, I guess, so really almost a year.
Right.
Well, no, let's say eighteen, September of eighteen, so he had several months before he sold it. So, it did sit vacant.
I suspect what happened is it wasn't objectively for sale, even though it was loosely for sale, there's no way to, to grab onto any evidence that there's a for sale sign or a listing or any way for us to put a, a note in the file that the non-conformity was continuing. But I don't know that, I'm, I'm just guessing.
So, what you're saying is that it had to be for sale the whole time to be in compliance?
Well, the, the prior operator, who, whoever owned the building, whether they were leasing it or using it for a commercial use, would be grandfathered for that use, even if it went vacant, as long as the building was for sale.
For sale.
Either gonna be used or for sale without an intervening gap of more than six months. That said, the Board has been very generous and respected me and staff to, to be creative given the hurricane and the burdens that put on people in finding contractors and trying to find evidence that they were trying to repair something. We don't have a repair effort here, I don't think. I think it's either, was it being used, and if it wasn't being used, was it for sale?
Do we know if it was damaged beyond fifty percent to require it to become up to current code?
No, we haven't data.
What was it done, I meant, was, was it damaged that much? Because it would have to be elevated, right?
And, and I know these are, these are tough questions, cause these are all the common sensible questions you're asking. What's it gonna be used for? Who's gonna be there? What's the, what's the design plan look like? That's all downstream questions, but I certainly get those are the most relevant to you. But at this point, it's, it's a more general thirty thousand foot question, is this an appropriate C four zone or not? If it is, all those other questions will have to get answered or, or, or a particular business might not be able to go back there. The zone doesn't cure all the other development or factors that staff will consider.
The, the last comment I'll make is, if you look at all the websites, whether it's GIS, all the MLS sites that show sales history, all of them say it's commercial. And that, that's where I've struggled with this all along. I certainly, I'm sensitive and understand the concerns of the, the residents, but the building itself, I meant the actual, it, it looks like a commercial property. And the reason I'm asking those questions is because hoping that there's a technicality that would say, hey, this, this solves this issue one way or the other, but, um, this is a tough one for them to know.
Yes, sir, and that door's never closed to the applicant. I mean, they, they have the burden of proof to come forward, despite whatever the Board may do tonight, they still have all their options if they can prove their case.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll renote him, it's kind of like, um, the comment I'd like to make is, um, and I know, I lived in the Riverside neighborhood for sixteen years, and the struggle we had as property owners since there were so many apartments multifamily. So, we, what we tried to do was get that six month non-compliance so we could help revert that neighborhood back to a true residential neighborhood. And we did that pretty much, and it brought up the values of the homes and really benefited the whole neighborhood. I see this as a similar situation in that we have a residential neighborhood that is struggling and needs to be lifted somewhat. So, if this in some way would devalue the homes on either side, that's a concern for me. I feel like, um, I've always been a supporter of, of good, strong residential neighborhoods. If we look at what we're charged to do, we're not charged to look at the use or, you know, what the business is gonna be, what is the use under all those tables? And I keep coming back to the fact, it's residential, residential around it, the citizens that live in that general area, and I know, uh, somebody that called me that lives on that street, um, that's what they want. They want to, uh, maintain that residential, uh, neighborhood, so therefore I would vote against this, uh, I would call it as inconsistent, uh, zoning request.
Okay, does anybody on the Board have any other questions to comment? Yes.
Mayor, um, Jeff, I wanna ask you a question, um, because the Craving, Craving County Tax Office, okay? How it's listed as a residential, um, structure, or vacant residential tract? So, in your department, when someone, in, in this instance about rezoning, with this saying on the Craving with this saying on the Craving County website, that tax record for that parcel of land is saying residential, do you have any, within your office, do y'all work within any guidelines based on what Craving County have their property listed as?
Again, that is what they drove down the street and looked outside and just took a note of every building and what it was. You would call that the existing land use. From a planning standpoint, we also have another layer of regulation over the top of that called zoning that governs, you know, future uses of property. So what the, the county does, and I'm not sure, does it say existing tract?
It actually says.
It says vacant residential tracts. And that may be that they looked at the zoning because the zoning is residential. So it is a residential tract of land, irrespective of the structure that's on it. Okay, so that's looking at it today. That's all the county cares about. They assess the value of what's there today. So when we go and look at zoning, zoning is different and not, not all the time.
Are we talking about two different lots here? Because, I mean, Craving County's GIS website lists this as commercial, general, commercial use. So this R six vacant lot, I don't know which lot we're talking about. I thought I heard somebody say previously that it was the one across the street or something.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that that's very clear.
His pink diagram there shows it as a commercial tract, but it's, it's residential. And that was just sold in nineteen, a year ago, listed as vacant residential.
That's the large one across the street?
Yeah, the large piece directly across the street.
Yeah, across the street. That land use is vacant residential tract.
Yes.
We're getting deep in the weeds about Craving County's GIS website that is one hundred percent irrelevant to everything we're doing tonight. They do a great job over there. It's a great resource. It is rife with errors and mistakes that are, that are largely not even relevant to them. But certainly in this setting, whatever their GIS says about anything has nothing to do with our zoning maps, which is the official map of New Bern. Does that help?
Well, thank you for, thank you for clarifying that. But also I wanted to know if that, if Jeff's department have any correlation there? If they use Craving County's information?
Oh, yeah, we, we use it all the time. And when we find glaring errors, we, we do contact them. But this wouldn't be any, existing land use isn't anything that we spend too much time on.
Mayor, if there's no more questions by the board? I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a statement of zoning inconsistency for the twenty-four nine Oaks Road.
A second that?
Motion as second is there, discussion. Seeing no further discussion, let's have a little call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
No. I mean, yes.
Okay, let's make sure we totally understand our votes.
Yes.
Do you wanna?
No, no, yes for inconsistency.
Okay. Alderman Kenzie?
Well, my vote the last time is that I want the guy to have his business there, so.
So you would vote against this? Is that what you're saying you want to do?
Yes, because I want him to have his business there.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes, for the right motion.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
I'm voting no because I want him to have it there.
Alderman Bingo?
Yes.
Question carries.
Give us a roll of the tally, that's five to two.
Carrie, five to two.
Okay, five to two. Now, does anybody have any questions before we get further?
Do we want to explain it? Just to make sure everybody understands what we've done here?
I'm sorry, Jeff, forgive me, but because you have found the proposed new zoning inconsistent with city plans and existing zones, there's no further steps? That the matter is denied and we're moving on to the next item?
Okay, item number seven.
May I?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. Scott, can you please, because I know it was addressed here tonight, just briefly give the legal procedures that we as a board take on voting when Alderman feel that they want to rescind their, their votes so that the public can understand our last meeting? Because I've had a lot of.
Sure, sure. I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to keep this simple and clear.
Yes, please, but.
You hear me tell you regularly, this is your meeting, right? And that, that has special meaning. It's not our meeting out here. It is your meeting to, to conduct cities' business. The basic procedures that you follow are designed to do a couple of basic things. Basically, those rules allow the majority of you on the board to do what you want to do at all times, right? Common sense. The rules also protect the minority so that the majority can't squash viewpoints that want to be expressed by the minority. So those are the fundamental principles of how your meeting is to operate. Majority always wins, but you can't bully a dissenting view because sometimes those dissenting views turn out to be insightful and thoughtful and change the majority view, okay? So it is always your meeting. It is not, it, it is, it is uncommon to get through an agenda and have to go back and re-address an issue. I've been thinking about this. I've probably dealt with it four or five times and I think I've been through over a thousand meetings. It doesn't happen very often. But the rules clearly allow that and it makes sense that they should allow it. It is your meeting. I've actually had a couple situations where, as the board got deeper into its agenda, it learned facts that changed some minds on an earlier item. And the board, the majority of the board, wanted to go back and change its mind. And again, it is your meeting, by your meeting, I mean a majority of you. So if a majority of you wants to go back and fix something, you can certainly do that. An issue can come up after you close a meeting, but still, nine times out of ten, I can still find a way to help you cure a mistake or a change of heart if you want to. Which is a, a, another point that I wanted to clarify. Whether somebody is mistaking or changes their mind is never a question to your meetings. You're allowed to make a mistake, you're allowed to change your mind, right? That's the process. That's why you have discussions so that you can maybe change minds. Sometimes later in discussions, things kick in, they settle in, and you want to go back and change something. And again, if a, if a majority wants to, you can. If, if there is not a majority to go back and change something, then certainly you won't. And that's one of the rules where we don't allow a minority to keep pecking on the majority, right? The minority of people on an issue can't keep asking for a revote and a revote and a revote, right? Then the minority is bullying the majority. In my experience with this board, certainly and, and every prior board, we, we don't have problems in New Bern, and certainly with these small boards, about the majority squashing the minority view. Never had that happen in almost thirty years, right? It's very easy with a seven-member board to make sure everyone gets their say. The rules and procedures that folks revert to for Robert's rules are largely designed for very large parliamentary organizations where it's hard to control a hundred or a thousand people trying to vote. But when it's seven, it's just as easy as I told you. What does the majority want to do? We're gonna find a way for that to happen.
So does that mean we can somewhat set the rules such as, you know, once a vote's taken and we take a break, there's no changing after the break? You know, just again, putting protections in place that makes our vote honorable? Understanding that we do change our mind because then, then what is that, that point? You go home, you sleep on it, you come back the next day and say, okay, I want to change my vote, I don't think at that point would be acceptable. Now, if you want to put the item on the agenda again, have debate, I can,
Sure, sure.
I can understand that. But I, do we, do we put some rules? Are we allowed to do some of that?
It, it would be terribly inadvisable because there's no way to govern that. There's no way to govern how you want. You would not want to box yourself out from changing your mind or learning new information or having the facts change on you. If your own rules say, well, we failed, we missed it, but we can't go back, even though we all want to because our own rules felt less, that, that would be ill-advised, right? This is a, it's a very, very rare situation and you wouldn't want to try to conjure up a rule to fix one problem out of a thousand to box you out from, from the ninety-nine point nine percent of, of, of logical reasons why you'd want to go back and do something different.
Scott?
Yeah.
What, what might make things a lot easier is if we simplified this verbiage?
Yes, sir. I, I completely agree.
Yeah. I mean, we, mistakes happen. My friend,
Yeah.
as soon as it was over, we had said something to me, said, I, I don't know if I just did the right thing or not. I was kinda, it almost happened again tonight?
Sure, sure.
Yeah, so, I mean, we really need to simplify this verbiage.
It will be happening and you'll be, you'll be seeing that in the coming months. Yes, amen to that.
Well, thank you, Scott.
Yes, ma'am.
Item number seven.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number seven is a public hearing in consideration of the board to adopt an amendment to the historic district guidelines. The HPC has approved revisions to the New Bern Historic District Guidelines, which are part of the Land Use Ordinance. The guidelines were last updated in early of two thousand seventeen and the proposed revisions will address some of the new issues as well, clarify some gray areas that exist within the code. Just before I have staff come up and kind of give you a, a review of some of these changes which were included in your packet, this was unanimously approved by the HPC at their June seventeenth, twenty twenty meeting and by the Planning and Zoning Board at their July seventh, twenty twenty meeting. So at this point, I will turn over to Mr. Shelley. He's going to go over some of these changes and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Just as a little bit of background to the situation or to the text amendment you have before you is that in twenty seventeen, the current version of the Historic District Guidelines was adopted with, essentially it was a reorganization of the previous version of ordinances in order to make it a little more clear and a little more easy to understand. Which means that there haven't been any substantive changes or any significant substantive changes for many years. And so, over the course of the years, there have been a number of issues with, say, unclear gray areas or even changes of technology or even the change in the board and things like that that have resulted in a long list of changes that the HPC would like to do. So several months ago, we undertook the effort to begin the update of the guidelines in order to affect those changes that the HPC wanted to make. And we started with what we called the low-hanging fruit. Primarily items that everybody on the HPC pretty much was in agreement needed to be changed. And so that's essentially the three-page list you have in front of you. So that process then started with, they have an updates committee and started with that group to actually whittle it down and wordsmith the actual changes. And then from there, went to the actual full board and then the board actually made a few little changes again. And finally, it is now the version that you have before you, that they adopted on June eighteenth. So I'm available if you have any questions.
If you would just go through the three-page list a little bit would help us all. I mean, if.
I'm sorry, sir?
If you would just go through briefly at the back of the, of item seven, starting with approved changes to new historic district guidelines.
Correct.
You know, I see quite a few things that have been scratched out, trees and minor residential landscaping.
I'll tell you, this is really detailed, Mayor. I think the everyday person would find this very onerous. I, I'd like to make a couple of comments because both districts are in my ward. So I'm the one that gets the calls all the time. Put the floor against it, as you know that. Mr. Shaw, I do want to thank you. You've been very helpful and I, I get lots of compliments from your good service to our citizens. So I thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
My concern, one thing I, I did notice here, maybe I'm missing it. I actually sat on this board. I actually did updates back in the nineties and I don't know how hard this is. But based on the, the last hurricane we had and so much destruction, two homes in both of these, the Riverside and the downtown historic districts, there was a lot of angst and stuff. And I don't see some of the changes being addressed in this that I think would have been helpful and really caused a lot of angst. Or maybe, not changes, but clarifications to make it a little easier for people who have suffered the damage that they have suffered, what they need as far as the ventings and other stuff that are, that are now being required. I'm, I'm glad, I think the minor works making that easier for you makes it a whole lot better. I think spelling out some of your major works, what, what that's required is as well. My question about the trees is, do you not involve, don't you, in a lot of cases, have to involve the parks and rec? Because a lot of the trees sometimes may not be on their home but are in front, but it still has to, doesn't have to have HPC consideration?
So with that.
I'm sorry, I said a mouthful.
No, that's all right.
Several things I don't see on here.
Sure, I can work backwards a little bit, but first with the trees. Any street tree that is to be removed does come before us. It's a minor item, minor work. So in fact, I have on my desk for tomorrow morning a stack of ten more trees for both the downtown and the Riverside districts. And those are done by the Parks and Rec Department. They have their own arborist on staff, thank goodness. And they are fully aware of the process that's involved and now they are very good at providing all the information that I need to make the decision as to whether or not to issue the permit. Then we have now recently, and that's now reflected in this change here, is we're, we used to be able to call on the county extension agent to be able to give us some advice when we're talking about removing a tree, maybe diseased or have some other structural deficiencies or something of that nature. But they've now opted out of that. They were doing that voluntarily for the city. They've now opted out of that. And so as a result, we now are looking to require that an arborist be, be hired by the applicant in order to provide us the information that we would need to know that it's okay or appropriate to remove any particular tree.
Wouldn't you make it clear though, again, you're making these changes now, now's the time to do it? Clear that a tree that may be in front of your home but is in the city right of way is not owned by you and must, you know, follow that process? We, we had some instances where people were upset because they felt ownership in those trees when they were really the city and the city felt they needed to come down. So again, I, I want to make sure that these guidelines are as user-friendly and as clear to the citizens that are using them because that's when we have the issues and the problems. I just want to make sure if we're, if we're making changes, let's do whatever we can to make those changes.
Sure, that, that, yes.
Rather than later.
As far as historic district guidelines, I suppose we could add reminders like that in there. It's not really the purview of the, of the guidelines to tell people that something is or isn't in the public right of way. However, we can certainly mention that in the narrative that's built into, say, the landscaping section. That's one change that would be easy to make in the future. So what I wanted then to back up then, going back towards the beginning, is that this is actually a first round of revisions that we'd like to make. The next round we'd like to make will be tackling bigger issues such as the, the, how to deal with flooding in the historic district. Just last November, the National Park Service put out a forty-page document to provide some help to cities like us as to, to give us some advice as to how to handle flooding for historic buildings. National Park Service is in charge of the National Register for Historic Places. And so they're the authorities at the federal level for this. And so using that guidance, we'd like to craft a, a rather meaty piece to the guidelines and put that in place as well. So that's going to take a little bit longer than the low-hanging fruit. We just wanted to make sure we get some, some of these changes in now and work on the, the more heftier pieces over the coming months.
Include the hog slats?
The what?
The hog slats that was an issue at.
Yeah, they're in here.
So this is in this new revision?
Yes. That, that, we don't call them hog slats because that's kind of a trade or trade name, or kind of a colloquial name. They're comfy panels.
Okay.
That's on page three.
Okay.
So 2.9.1, that's a change.
All the notes?
Just, just one question or comment. Matt, first of all, thank you for this tough job you've had to try to undo all the mistakes that Alderman Bingle made when she was on this board.
That's right.
That's why it's taken so long to get these same mistakes.
I had the worst headaches after every, this was in the old days, too.
Back when you were a lot younger, right?
That's right.
Just, just one question, and it's come up quite a bit with my experience. Where in here does it say that what the process is, if someone, if there's an existing brick building, and they want to paint the brick?
Okay, so in this document, we're not changing that.
Okay.
In the current guidelines, it says under masonry maintenance, and also, I believe, in the paint section, thou shalt not paint previously unpainted masonry, period.
And, and we've got a process to go back and fix these corrections. That's the biggest thing that I hear from, and I don't hear much, honestly, it's in her ward, but the feedback I do get is that it's, it's tough to deal with the city, especially when it comes to HPC stuff. So anything I agree with Alderman, anything we can do to simplify this, the better, and to be proactive on the front end, so people know sort of what they're getting into.
Right, so, one of the biggest, one of the biggest changes is this bit about the minor works. Because there are so many cases of, that you couldn't, you couldn't anticipate ahead of time and list as a guideline. We had an applicant who was replacing some balcony flooring on the front of a building, but it was on the second and third floor. You couldn't see them from the street, but technically, they're in the front of the building. And so technically, it had to go to the HPC meeting, even though it was a modern building, replacing with modern materials. All okay, it just had to go, so, had to go through the process because of the technicality of that. So we're removing, with this one, we're removing that technicality and allowing the HPC to, at their first meeting, the design review informal meeting, to say, "Hey, Matt, you can take care of this. This isn't really, doesn't need to come to the full board."
Well, just correct me if I'm wrong, but the way I read the page one, which is why I asked you to go through it for a moment, is you basically are taking the minor work, which administratively, a person with a tree that anybody look at, it's 90% dead, decayed, that needs to come down, that might be opinionated amongst neighbors or whatever, and you're transferring that one-hour process for somebody out there that has that problem to administratively be dealt with, brought to fruition, and you are latterly moving it to the historic design review. So that applicant now has to, because you're going to eliminate all the minors.
Okay, I'll clarify that. I'll clarify this. So this very first part, that starts on the very first page with the strike through, this removes a list, a list of minor works that currently exists in the printed document, which is actually no longer valid as it's written, because it's been superseded by a list that we have on the website, that has, it's a longer list with more items that can be treated as minor works.
And where is that noted on this page three for us to review?
So...
Is it on there? That's what you just said?
Right.
Because I couldn't find it.
The, the italics, so let's, section one, we said...
I see your bold part is, is your change, and I see your, your line through is your deletion, but
Right.
the item you're speaking of?
Is in the italics just before the bold. So it's already written in the document that it says, "A list of minor works that can be approved by the HPC administrator is maintained and updated by the HPC. The complete list is available on the City of New Bern website."
Well, that would, you know, that's why there's lawyers. That would make me believe that that's referring to that list you're fixing to delete.
Right, and...
The same list is redundantly somewhere else in...
In some cases, it was a conflict. So we got rid of the, we're getting rid of the conflict by striking it out of the book.
Well, I'm more concerned with the process for citizens now. I think Mr. Oden was talking about the concerns about paint and the misunderstandings, but, you know, I think the citizens are due a due process of some things that our administrators should be done. I don't see them having to wait however long it is for a historic design review approval. It looks more to me like that, that from a conflict resolution standpoint of if it should be done or not, the staff is moving that issue to the design review committee, so they're going to have to deal with it. That's what it looks like to me. I just am trying, and if it is, that's fine if it's not. But what I'm trying to say is, I don't see a citizen having to wait two weeks to get a tree cut down when administratively, and I guess you're saying, that even though you are saying you are moving that to design review, it actually is enumerated somewhere else that they can administratively do now.
Right, so...
Is that right?
So what we're saying by crossing out that portion, what we're saying, we're eliminating, first of all, we're eliminating that out-of-date list that's printed in the document from 2017. So if we just did that, we would still be left with what we're working with today, is a list of minor documents on the website.
Mr. Benson, am I out of order on this question, or?
I'm confused here, Mayor. I'm sorry.
Sir, okay.
We provide a red-line version and a clean version, so that you can see the changes. I remember last, a little bit ago, it was very simple and clear, very simple. These are a handful of simple changes.
Yeah.
And I think the redlining italics has gotten pretty thrown off, maybe.
Yeah, and I can see what you're, I can see where the confusion is, and it's because we're doing two things at once in this one section. So if we just take it one step at a time, would that, would that be helpful? To go through that one item, at least, because that seems to...
Whatever, my major heartburn, so, yeah, we'll do that.
Sorry. So, the first thing is, we're leaving that sentence that says that, that the list of minors is on the website. Okay, we're leaving that. Then...
I thought you said it was obsolete, though.
No, the, the list on the website is the current one. It's, it's the, the longer list, it's the one that we use, that is the...
And it's not this one you just crossed out?
And this one crossed out here exists now in the printed book. That is, well, that's distributed when everyone gets a printed book, or gets sent the, looks at the book on, on the website, sorry. So, but that was written in 2017. Since then, that list has been expanded by the HPC, and that list is been changed on the website, but because the book has to go through the whole process to get changed, it hasn't been changed in the book. Let's just go with printed book, all right? So, now that we're here, we want to get rid of that list out of the printed book entirely, and use only the list that's on the website.
The HPC guidelines will say, go to the website for the easy list.
Right, that's what it says here, yep. And that's that italics.
They say partial list. So in, in what you're getting at, it says a partial list, so it tells you this isn't a full list anyway, so you need to go somewhere else to see the reminders.
Well, let me ask you this. If, if you, if you see a tree that is a no-brainer and needs to come down, are you going to administratively give a person a permit? And then if you see a tree that's one of those conflicting, opinionated situations, are you going to run that through design review?
No.
Okay, it's all going to get through?
It's, it's, it has been and still remains a minor work. Even with the changes here, all of that, it still remains a minor work. It looks like it's being taken out, because it's, we're taking out just the stuff out of the book, but on the website, it's still listed as a minor work.
Mayor, I have a question for you. Please, and I'm not sure if it's addressed in here or not, but please tell me the reason why you have a home in the historic district, it's a brick house, that has moisture, pardon me?
Terrible leaks.
Has moisture seeping through the brick. Please tell me why the HPC will not allow a clear product to go on, over that brick, the ceiling?
It turns out that oftentimes, the, the, those treatments are actually worse for the brick than, than not having it, and usually, the, the cure is either repointing or relaying some brick.
The premise behind that is, is that when it can't come and breathe through the brick, it finds somewhere like around the facial or other areas that it causes to damage.
Especially the old brick needs to breathe.
So depending on how old the brick is?
Right, so a modern, a modern brick, which is post-1930s, when they started to build more skyscrapers out of brick, and, you know, multi-story buildings out of brick, they were making, manufacturing...
How do you seal a brick?
Well, there's, they, there are sealants that do that. But, older brick, you do not seal. It's just, you do not do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
It makes more of a point source. It'll rot out, or it will
That's right.
decay a more point source area if you holistically treat it. It's going, water's going to find somewhere to do this damage.
That's right, that's right. It's like putting a plastic bag over your head, or, you know, or over a building. The air can't get out, the moisture can't get out.
Okay. So what do we do now?
It's public hearing.
Public hearing. Any other questions?
Okay, anything else? Ready for your public hearing? All right, let's have a, open a public hearing. Anybody like to come forward and ask or make any comments, questions? Please do so at this time.
James Woods, 1903 Country Club wrote, "As a HPC commissioner, we're trying to make the HPC guidelines simplified, okay? What Matt was trying to explain, guys, on the website, it said one thing, in the book, it said another. So we were trying to eliminate what was in the book, because there was a longer list on the website. When he said it's coming to design review, he just tells us, hey, a tree at Umpire Frats was cut down, and it had all the paperwork. That's the only thing that's said at design review, and we shake our head okay. It does not get approved at design review if Matt has already approved it. Minor works means that Matt take care of it, and all he does is inform the commissioners that it's been done."
Well, again, a nice quote here, and I appreciate, Mr. Woods, you coming forward, because I've seen you many times on TV. Appreciate what you do for us, but shouldn't the, the printed and the web be consistent?
Absolutely, that's what we were trying to do, because the website had one thing, and when then, when people would come before us, they'd say, "Well, this is on, what's on the website," and we had something different in the book. So we, as a commission, came together and said, "Hey, we need to be consistent in what was, what a person would have." So we went with what was on the website. But we are revamping the whole guidelines to try to make it easier, not just for the commissioners, but for, and it, I'm telling you, I've been up there three years, and I've learned a whole lot.
And there's not room for circumventional part of, of somebody to come up and argue that I'm finding something in the printed form that I'm not finding on the website, and that make an argument?
That's what we're trying to eliminate, Mr. Mayor. We're, we're trying to eliminate that.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Legally right this minute, applicants for minor works are bound by the guidelines, not by the website. Staff is trying to make the list on the website more robust, so that it's easier. Minor works are easier than major works, so staff with good intentions started with the HPC's help of making the list for minor works longer to make the application process quick and easy.
So why do you not replicate in printed form the website?
What, what they want to do is they want the option, as they discover new things, by incorporating the website by reference, when the HPC comes up with a new idea that can be a minor work. Rather than going through all of this to do it, they can just go to the website and add the new thing to the list to make it more user-friendly.
A prime example is, say, shutters. Shutters would come to the commission as a major work when the person just wanted to remove the shutters that was never on their home to start with. Somebody added them. So we came as a commission and said, "Hey, that should be a minor works." Because Matt is smart enough to make that decision on his own without us coming before us. So on the website, it may say that shutters is a minor work, so that, but in, in the book, it didn't say that. So that's all we're trying to do, is just to get it all to look alike.
And could I ask this question? From what I've read up on this and everything, it looks to me more like that the website patterns HPC guidelines on a state basis, and that the printed is more germane to the local option of how to, to propagate, you know, to make...
I would say, sir, that what happened was the guidelines that was written in 2017 was written before the information was put on the website. The website was written afterwards, and whoever did the website went on what Shippo was doing, and not what HPC in New Bern was doing. So we're trying to streamline it to where everything looks the same. So if I pull it up online, and it tells me, prime example about the brick, why can't I put a ceiling on brick? It was specified why, because brick has to breathe. Did you know that? I, I didn't know that when I first got on the board, but after being on the board and learning and listening and talking and looking at things, then I understood, brick has to breathe, especially older brick. And we have a lot of older homes. The, the flood issue, that 40-page document, it took us a month and a half, two months to go through to pick out things in there that we wanted to put in there, in our HPC guidelines, that will reflect our area. You know, so it, it, it's a, it's a process.
I would tell you, it's more of the mortar breathing, even though the brick does breathe, but it's more about the mortar breathing.
Sixty-one half dozen of them, sir.
Either way, you can't sell them, sorry.
That's right.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion, second, close the public hearing. Is there any other discussion about this item?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the amendment.
We got to vote on closing the public hearing.
I'm sorry. I don't favor the motion, say aye. I'll put the same motion.
Aye. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt an amendment to the Historic District Guidelines with caveat, please, that you are going to continue to update them and bring back at a later date additional updates.
Yeah, motion and a second is their discussion. So a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Atwell?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries number eight.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number eight is a resolution encouraging the North Carolina Department of Transportation to proceed with North Carolina Highway 43 Connector project. This project is a 2.3-mile portion of the Highway 43 connector that's been placed on hold by the NCDOT. This resolution encourages NCDOT to move forward with the project, as it will promote and enhance economic development in New Bern and Craven County, as well as improve the connectivity within our local community between Greenville and New Bern, as well as Jacksonville. So at this point, I'm going to turn this over. I think Alderman Odom, you wanted to add a couple of comments from the MPO's standpoint.
I'll, I'll reiterate, I mentioned this to the board several weeks ago, that with the financial struggles that have been well-publicized by DOT, this particular project was funded, and still is, the construction aspect of it with bond money. However, the acquisition money comes from a different pool, which is where they're broke. So what we want to do is make sure that, like unfortunately many things that happen in transportation within the state, is when funds become available, that priority seems to focus on the metro areas, your Wilmingtons, your Rowleys, your Charlottes. We want to make sure that this project stays at the top of their list, because as Mr. Ruggieri, Mr. Duff... Uh, we wanna make sure that this project, um, stays at the top of their list because as Mr. Ruggieri, Mr. DeGans can attest, um, comments that we've had from folks and developers for many, many years, the first question they ask is when we're looking at this area is, when is the road gonna be complete? Um, if that road was complete, we would probably have a, a nice, modern gas station that's red on the outside. Um, we could have a lot of other amenities in that area, but we've gotta get this. I'm not mentioning the name, but we've gotta get this road complete so we can continue with the economic development in that corridor. So that was the reason for, this is just a, another sign of support for the project.
Hey Jeff, I, I think it's a great idea and I'm ready to approve the resolution, but I have a question. Do we ever hear from anyone as to our resolutions that we send? I mean, we sent, we sent a resolution on County Line Road a year ago and I've never heard a word from anybody about it.
I, I can check on the County Line Road to see who we actually sent it to and then we can follow up. But I do know that the resolution we did on this forty-three connector, I don't know if it was this board or the previous board, about the, the stops and the design of that road weighed heavily in DOT's decision to make sure that it was designed the right way. Um, so I do know that they, they've had some influence on the County Line Road. I, I have my suspicions on why we didn't hear from that.
I, I do too, but it would be nice if we could, if we, if they said, hey, we got your resolution and we're taking it under consideration or something. You know, I don't even know if it got to them.
We'll have Matt, uh, call and find out since, uh, it was kind of initiated through us.
Okay, good.
Call it, make our contacts out to NCDOT.
So while you're speaking on this subject of roads, I know that refunding has been cut, but what about paving projects? That's state-maintaining roads?
I, I think those are more maintenance dollars, but I, I, I think those would be more of your maintenance dollars, uh, but at this point, um, I'm not real sure, uh, with the NCDOT's, um, budgetary issues, uh, I would not be expecting a whole lot, uh, be one of those, uh, expect the worst, hope for the best kind of things. But I don't know.
While you're asking questions, can you ask them that as well?
I'm sure we can and I'm, I'm guessing you're referring to the, um, um, Pleasant Hill area, the resurfacing that you had talked about, uh, and sent us, requesting information there.
Yes. And there's other areas around the city that needs to be paved as well. So, I mean, can we get some update on that as well? I would appreciate it.
I'm sure they probably got a, a, a paving schedule. Happy to, to, to ma- have Matt reach out to our NCDOT contacts and try to get that.
Thank you.
And just to be clear, the, the NPO governs future projects and development for highways, so maintenance would be kind of a different bucket. Personally, I was just glad to see when I left town the other day that they were cutting the sides of Highway seventy when I went to Fayetteville. I was kind of surprised to see that, but pleasantly surprised. Um, Mayor, if there's no other questions or comments, I'd like to make a resol- make a motion to adopt a resolution encouraging the NCDOT to proceed with the NC Highway forty-three connector project.
Second. Motion and second. Is there discussion? Seeing that we have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Atwell?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Aye.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries item number nine.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number nine is a resolution approving the sale of, uh, two-two-zero-three Chestnut Avenue. Uh, after receiving a bid of three hundred and seventy-five dollars, the board adopted a resolution on the twelfth of May, twenty twenty, to initiate the upset bid process for said, uh, property. Uh, the bid was advertised, no additional bids were received. The property is a vacant point zero six acre lot with a tax value of seven hundred and fifty dollars, uh, which the offer represents fifty percent of the value. Uh, the property was acquired jointly by the city and the county through tax foreclosure in two thousand and nineteen. The commissioner's deeds, state, uh, taxes, interest and penalties due to the city at the time of foreclosure were five hundred and fifty-six dollars and forty-five cent. The city contributed four hundred and eighty dollars and ninety-nine cent toward the cost of the foreclosing proceeding. There's a memo and pictures included in your packet. I'm happy to answer any questions.
More than have questions?
All right, Mayor. If no one has questions, I would like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the sale of two-two-zero-three Chestnut Avenue.
Second.
Motion and second. Is there a discussion? Seeing that we have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Atwell?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries item number ten.
Item number ten, Mayor, is a resolution approving a lease and license agreement with the Friends of the New Bern Fireman's Museum Incorporated. Uh, the lease and license agreements, uh, between the city and the Friends of the New Bern Fireman's Museum has expired and the new agreements are needed. Um, this lease agreement covers the city-owned, uh, facility at four-twenty and four-twenty-two Broad Street that are utilized by the museum. The license agreement covers the city's personal property that is located within the museum, such as the artifacts. Uh, both agreements are for a term of ten years with expiration being June thirtieth of twenty thirty. There's a memo in your packet from Mr. Montane, uh, and, uh, other items and we'll be happy to answer any question you have.
Okay. Before we have questions?
None, I'd like to make a motion approving a lease and license agreement with the Friends of the New Bern Fireman's Museum.
Second. Motion and second. Is there discussion? Seeing that we have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Atwell?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Aye.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries item number eleven?
May, can we?
Yes, ma'am.
Can we take a short break?
Yes, ma'am. Make a motion for that.
Maybe we can change the vote.
Uh, you made a motion.
Yes.
Do we have second?
Yeah.
Uh, motion and second to?
Seven.
Yes. I don't think the motion say aye. I'll put the same motion first. Go recess for a couple of minutes. Okay, were we on item number eleven?
Eleven. Uh, thank you, Mayor. Item number eleven is a resolution to approve amendments to the City of New Bern's water and sewer design standards. Uh, in two thousand and seven, the city's water and sewer design standards were originally issued for the purpose of providing a comprehensive guideline for developers, builders and engineers who desire to extend, connect to, or otherwise alter the city's existing water and sewer infrastructure. Uh, the standards were most recently revised in January of two thousand and eighteen to reflect changes to the state regulations, cons- construction practices and material standards. A review of the current vision yielded several minor technical and grammatical changes that are needed. Uh, those changes have been incorporated and are outlined in the red line version that's included in your memo. At this point, I'm gonna, um, turn it over to Jordan, let Jordan come up and kind of explain to you, uh, in some, in some brief detail, uh, some of those changes, as well as, uh, I know there's been some questions in the past, uh, several, uh, weeks about, uh, where we are providing service and where we aren't providing service, basically south of the Trent River. Uh, so at this point, you can kind of go over a little bit of that detail.
I thank you, Mayor, members of the board. Uh, as Mark mentioned, most of the changes this go around, and I think this is our third kind of revision since we incorporated these standards back in two thousand and seven. Every couple of years, we just go through and make sure that the standards reflect, uh, changes to current state regulations, uh, as well as construction practices, material standards, things like that have changed. Uh, most of the changes in here are very minor, reflecting either a, a, a new change in state regulation, a minor typo we found from an old one, a, a new material standard that's been, uh, you know, implemented in construction for the last couple of years. Um, the, the one change that I think does have a little bit of substance you may want to discuss or talk about a little bit, it, as Mark mentioned, is the change to our, our step system coverage area that's reflected, um, in, in section four. Uh, essentially, this is where we outline where we offer our conventional sewer system and our step system, our sewer system in the James City area. And the difference with those two, with the step system, we have our, our, the, the old county system we took over, uh, many years ago that we've been operating, uh, we've got, we able to offer that to new development in limited capacity. Um, what we're changing with this iteration is, uh, the ability to offer more development on the step system and essentially eliminate the need to extend the conventional sewer system to the north or east side of seventy anymore. So as you're going down Highway seventy, everything on your left, we would continue to serve from, with the step system and, and not have a requirement of making those customers or potential customers connect to the conventional sewer system.
Which means they don't have to annex, correct?
That is a whole issue.
Then we don't have to provide additional services.
There, there are a couple of issues that come with that. One is, we, we've learned over the years, it's very difficult to get our conventional sewer system to that side of seventy. Two, we have made enough improvements to the step system that we can offer pretty much, we, we can offer the capacity on the step system that's needed to, to accommodate the development on that side of seventy. Uh, and we've also, in the annexation portion, we've run into some public safety issues where, uh, that was kind of unintended side effect of annexing parcels on that side of seventy became difficult, provide fire, police protection to, uh, wh- which will only be compounded in the next twenty-four to thirty-six months as we go through major renovations to the highway system in that area.
I know that your, your map, looking at it, it, it makes sense what your map is showing, as long as everybody's understanding of the fact with the gravity system, virtually God in heaven is gravity feeding that sewer down there to a lift station. And with the step system, everybody's got a, a half horsepower motor or something that's gonna push that sewer. And so with that, I think several years ago, we were having so much, so many problems with the motors, I think that the city, we, we enacted an eight-dollar or something fee per month on every, every user for that problem. Is that right? Do you remember that?
Yes, sir. Essentially equates to, uh, eight dollars and thirty-three cents a month. It basically replaces that pump every five years and that was what a replacement cycle was, was looking like. And we're still pretty much on that same replacement cycle.
So while, you know, again, the gravity feed, it, it moves pretty much unless the lift station ceases to operate. But under this, there, there's been more failures and we have more issues with clean water. When, if somebody doesn't pay their power bill, but they're still flushing the toilet, there's gonna be some sewage out there that's gonna be, we're gonna get, and will be a violation. So again, as long as everybody understands what you're getting by expanding the use of the step, which, you know, I thought philosophically years ago that the board was moving more toward not using it because, uh, the problems associated with somebody's power goes off, that means that the sewer's going in the ditch. The problematic, the, the problems with those pumps. Um, and again, just from the standpoint of the equalization basin and how much, uh, capacity you had there versus gravity feeding sending stuff back to the sewer plant that we, we could expand. So as long as, uh, we all understand that we're moving ahead. And a big question I've never gotten an answer from, from anybody is, I, I assume that the gravity feed is probably a much, seeing how this is an enterprise operation and, and enterprise by definition means for profit hopefully, or standalone without another enterprise, uh, somehow subsidizing it. I would assume that a, a gravity feed coverage area is going to operationally be cheaper, uh, than a step system. So again, as long as the, what you might say, the, the gravity feed part of our enterprise, known as a sewer enterprise, is not having to offset potential losses because of infiltration of water, which has been issued, vacuums failing, um, and the amount of storm, you know, water that's, that's seeping in, capillary effect into those systems because the, the holding tank itself has a crack in it or something. As long as we, uh, uh, understand along stuff, you know, move forward, I personally do not like step system for those reasons. But, and I thought we were several years ago, I don't remember the amount of money, but we were working to deal out with, with Commissioner Tyson and others, that we were gonna run a, a line of gravity feed line across and croaks across seventy and we were gonna try to open up some sewer other than the step. What, where, what happened? Cause your map shows that whole area to be red now.
That, that's correct. And I guess a quick point of clarification, the minor changes from the previous version of this map, the coverage areas to the, the revised version, the areas that are gonna be served by the step system are currently served by the step system. The mains are in place. A lot of those customers are already served by the step system along there. We were essentially gaining new gravity system customers as we were converting or redeveloping those properties. Um, kind of one here, one there, uh, a- and for the most part, we were actually kind of a hybrid system between the step system and the gravity system to get those customers back to the conventional sewer system. Um, so in this area, we're, we're not expanding the step system in any way, shape or form. And, and in most places, the, the customers already have step system service and if that property were to redevelop, we're simply just not gonna a- we're not gonna ask them to convert to the conventional system. Um, in most cases, it's, it's very cost prohibitive to, to make that conversion as well. We've got a couple of areas where we have tried to extend the conventional service system across Highway seventy and we will continue to utilize that where we can. Uh, largely, that was for more system improvement benefits with some ancillary benefits of getting gravity sewer to the surrounding area. So that tho- those benefits will still be in place for the existing system. Uh, and Mayor, I agree with you wholeheartedly. I, I'm not a big fan of the step system either. Like, if we could do something different, cost-effectively, we certainly would. Unfortunately, at this point, you know, we, we've, you know, inherited a system that's got thirty-two hundred step system users and hundreds of miles of pipe. It would be tens and tens of millions of dollars to unwind that. Uh, so what we try to do is manage what we got the best we can. And, and over the last decade, I think we've done a pretty good job of, of taking a system that was largely, um, out of control. It had SOC many years ago. We've got all that reeled back in. We're able to not only continue to operate it, uh, by all the conditions of our state permit, but we're also to the point now where we can allow some additional users that we couldn't ten years ago. So a lot, a lot of work and effort's been put into making the system more manageable and, and really just trying to man- doing the best we can and managing a bad system that we, we've got.
So are you, you're basically saying, a- and again, one other thing the board should be concerned about is, is historically, and with the spirit of non-disenfranchising of the, of the original county contract, Farmers Administration, whatever, to, to get that step system in place, we are, we are going to pass that. And we're going past it that while on the gravity feed side, as we grow the system, most of those folks are, are being asked to be annexed into the city and we're gaining real property, adware, uh, revenue streams from that. Whereas on the, the opposite side, as you expand a step, again, the unknown cost of, of treating that sewer, uh, you're not necessarily going to be bringing in, uh, adware, real property expansion into our city. Is that a fair statement or how can we improve on that? How can we, when somebody wants to build a hundred-unit, uh, development on, on Old Sherpoint Road and we are approving this, we basically card block or saying, you don't have to come to the city and we want them to come into the city.
Our, our current step system policies would not allow that hundred-unit development on the step system. What, what the step, current step system policies allow are basically limited infill development on existing lots. So if you had a house here, a house there and a vacant lot in between, ten years ago, we wouldn't let you build anything on the lot in between and connect to the stepsi- step system as we didn't have capacity. What we're able to do now is say, if you got a house here and you got a house here, the lot in between is vacant, we, we can now allow you to infill that development on the step system. And that's essent- essentially all we're doing with the changing this coverage area is allowing infill development on existing step system infrastructure. We're not expanding the step system, we're not adding new mains, we're not really adding any new capacity to the step system. We're essentially allowing more infill development in areas that are already covered by the step system.
Well, in all due respect, the board can do what pleases, but I'd like to see the, every time we're dealing with something like this, I'm looking at the long-term economic ability of the city to gain revenue sources, the more revenue sources at, at a fair market rate, the less taxes, taxes go up and rates go up. So to me, to, to approve this, uh, I'd really go sit down and marry somebody financing or something or, uh, our attorney, tell us how we can approve the ability to, for folks to wanna be brought into the city limits of the city. Of course, knowing that, fire and police and everybody else, we've gotta be able to provide those services if we do it. But, uh, approving this tonight, if the board so chooses to do it, you haven't looked at the long range. Um, you're basically, I know a few instances where anybody's gonna ask to be annexed into the city limits on the Old Sherpoint Road side of seventy. Am I out of line on that?
Uh, one of the bigger issues that I, I think we've come across recently in the annexation question is, we have no water infrastructure on that side of seventy whatsoever. So we have a county water system that is not designed, not intended for fire protection. So we become, we get in a very catch-twenty-two situation where if we wanna annex a property, and let's take a hotel, for example. We annex that property in and say, now you're in the city limits, you gotta build to our standards. It's gonna require fire protection that the county system can't provide to them. We don't have water infrastructure on that side of seventy to give them the water provided to them. They're, they're kind of stuck in a situation, now they can't build. They can't build what they want because there's no, you know, there's no fire protection. no fire protection if they can get the, the available water they need. So it, it's an issue that we really have no infrastructure on that side of seventy, other than the old step system to provide basic sewer service and a limited capacity.
Well, don't, don't we though, uh, allow sewer over in the Breeson area, and they, some of that water, even I know there's subsidy in New Bern water, don't, don't some, aren't some of those served with First Craven Santeria over there?
They, they are.
So why, why would that, if we're doing it over Breeson, why would we not do the same model over in Old Church?
To my knowledge, the, the situations we run to in Sandy Point and the limited area there, in the commercial area, they haven't had a pressure issue. Um, I, I guess it's close enough to the First Craven Water Tower, and they've got good enough infrastructure, they've got just enough water pressure there to meet the minimum airflow requirements of it.
And we don't have water over there, just sewer, right?
Just sewer, yes, sir.
But, I mean, there's never a problem with a, a developer getting water. I mean, in Craven County, there's not. Carter County's a different deal, but there is always a problem with getting sewer, and that's kinda how we've been growing our electric grid in many instances, is that we have sewer. So...
Jordan, help me maybe untangle this a little bit. Um, you're saying that these design standards are not really changing anything that's in place right now, that there's, this is opening up the step system on that side of seventy for some limited infill opportunities?
And it's basically one row of parcels, so everything, essentially, it's, it's a very limited amount of parcels, uh, along the ones that just front seventy on the north or east side of seventy, however you wanna look at that, um, from Garner Road down to Riverdale, essentially.
Well, looking at the map on, on page nineteen, well, page, page eighteen, this map, you know, the red is step.
That, that's what I'm looking at. So just, just so I'm clear, what the mayor suggested is in this, anywhere in this red area, a hundred unit developer came in and said, I wanna build a hundred units. You're saying that even though it's in the shaded red area, we wouldn't offer them the step system?
We don't, the step system doesn't have the capability to serve a hundred unit complex in that shaded red. The step system is, is for all intents and purposes at capacity. What we've got the ability to do in that red area is infill, where we didn't ten years, ten years ago, there was, if you were in, you know, A, B, and C lot, if you had lot B, we were sorry, we could not give you sewer services, state would not allow us to.
So in the future, in the red area, if there is a developer that wants to do a hundred units, he would then petition the city to say, we want you to move conventional sewer?
It can always, that, that can always be an option.
He's not, he's not, we're gonna be paying that bill for the next year.
He can. He's saying we're not gonna give him this access.
We, we, our policies would not allow a hundred unit. If you take twenty acres and try to put a hundred units on it, the policies today would not allow. We, we don't allow expansion of the step system, period. I mean, that, that doesn't happen. If you've got lot A, B, and C, you'll let you connect lot B, or A, or C to the existing main that's in the street, but you're not gonna run, you're not gonna, you know, put new streets in and plat a new subdevelopment, run new mains in. We prohibited expansion of the step system back in, in, you know, two thousand and ten, and, and are not gonna change that. The system doesn't have capacity, treatment capacity, or transmission capacity to allow expansion. What we're allowing is the infill of old lots that, you know, just happened to be kinda caught in the step system. Now, it doesn't say that anybody that comes to us and says, hey, I've, I've got twenty acres over here, I really want to put a hundred units in, I don't mind putting the pump station in, I don't mind pumping it to your conventional system, I don't mind annexing. When that, when somebody comes to us like that and wants to connect, we always have the opportunity to run them through our, our, our water and sewer use agreement program, and that would come back for you, and, and would be presented to you in that fashion. It says, here's, here's the project, here's exactly what they wanna do, here's the location, here's the capacity. We look at that from all angles, and we present it to the board. It's up to the board at that point to either approve or deny that. If you approve it, we would allow them to connect. They would install the infrastructure and get that back to the conventional system on their, at their costs. Uh, they would be required to annex at that point. Uh, if you deny it, it gets denied. They're, they're limited to whatever system capacity the lot has available in the step system, which would be greatly reduced, um, from what it would be on the conventional system.
The last, the last comment I'll, I'll make, is there an opportunity with the Highway seventy improvements that, when all that's tore up, that we can go in and, you know, like they, in New House, you put a piece of conduit, goes down the road, you may wanna put a piece of wire through there? Is that an opportunity for us to take advantage?
We're, we're doing a lot of replacement work through there. Um, essentially, on the step system, it's not gonna make much difference. The transmission mains and things like that along seventy are big enough to accommodate the limited...
I meant to get the conventional on the other side of the road.
It, it would, it would take a tremendous amount of work, all at our cost. And any enhancement money, um, is a hundred percent on our cost. We, we have to, we have to pay twenty-five percent already of just relocating existing infrastructure, like kind and size. If you move a ten-inch main, if you replace it with a ten-inch main, we're having to foot twenty-five percent of that deal, which we're yet to be determined what that's gonna be. Uh, had a call this morning with DOT, then informed me some places we thought we were gonna be able to leave some stuff in place, through some storm drain redesign, or not gonna be leaving place. That, that, that quantity of pipe that's gonna have to be replaced, keep getting larger and larger. So at some point in the next, you know, probably the next fiscal year, we'll come back and have to open up a project fund to say, this is our cost for relocation utilities on Highway seventy. Even at twenty-five percent cost, it's gonna be very expensive. Um, it's kind of a shot in the dark with the gravity infrastructure. You could put it in a spot, and nobody utilizes it. We, we've got, but the one place we do have it across right now is probably the biggest undeveloped tracks, um, over there at this point, that contiguous undeveloped tracks, and it, it's just sitting there un, unutilized. It's largely developed along that corridor, um, from Garner Road through Riverdale. Most of that has already got some type of development on. There, there's not twenty or thirty acre tracks available for major development. We've, we've got conventional systems sitting there for something like that, but we, we don't have any, you know, no, no user at this point on it.
On the step, you know, we've done, I mean, Newsharmer, River Bluffs, Fable Crest, Green Tree. I mean, I can think of all these past developments that only are there because of the step system.
Correct, yes, sir.
So now you're saying that we would not, under the step system, approve a major development, even though we've, we've been a part of...
The, the last one was approved in two thousand and seven. We haven't approved one since.
Could you not modify a step system if, if a developer wanted to come in and put fifty, a hundred lots, that you would just gravity feed it to a low, large holding tank, and then hybrid the thing back, gravity feed it back?
Any type of major development beyond infill lot here or there would have to be a conventional system, and it'd have to go to, had to be transmitted back to the conventional sewer system, either somewhere along Old Airport Road or Trailway Color to that area.
I think from a, I think from business practice, the, the, the city in New Bern continued what the county was doing, offering sewer, and because the county was not in position to ask anybody to be annexed, they were not annexing anybody, cause they can't annex unless you jack for Florida. The city's in a different way. We, lower rates, lower taxes, more subscribers. So, uh, as long as the board is aware and you wanna move forward on this, like, if this is not time sensitive, I would look at the economic impact of your future revenue sources that you are, in my opinion, essentially, on the right side of Highway seventy, uh, limiting any future annexation. I don't know why anybody would be annexed if you can get the, the sewer. But, let, let me ask one question before we finish up. The average cost is probably maybe nine thousand bucks between, uh, tap fee, um, cap, I don't know, how do you do your, your capital reserve on that, but, uh, vacuum testing and everything on step versus person builds a home on a gravity feed? What would be a, a ballpark between, uh, a builder wanting to build a one, two lots, if there's step or gravity feed?
Uh, on the step system, you've probably got an extra thirty-five hundred dollars involved.
About eighty-nine, isn't that about?
By, by the time you buy the, the vacuum testing tank, you get that installed, uh, the system development fees are a little bit more by contract, is how we apply those. Yeah, so there, there's a little differentiation between the two.
So then on the, on the tap, a typical tap out there, again, standards, I guess, three-quarter line, three, three-four veteran home, is that about twenty-five hundred dollars?
You're gonna have, yeah, just shy of three thousand in the, in the capital, in the system development fees, and then another, uh, you know, twenty-five hundred and three thousand in, in everything else that goes along with that. So, so essentially, it's, it's cheaper to build a house in the city limits over there. If you take one in Blue Water Rise versus one in Croatan Crossing, it's cheaper to build a house in, in Blue Water Rise.
And what's the policy of the city of New Bern now? When that tank fails, and it has to be, to keep all this water infiltration on the step, what, you know, a brand-new house is built, and twenty years from now the tank fails, who replaces that tank?
The, the tank is a responsibility of the property owner. We maintain everything else. The pumps, the control panels, the service lines, we take care of anything else. If we identify a tank that has collapsed, had failed at some point, we work with the property owner, identify what the issue is, explain to them the need to get that repaired, and work the repair process. Most of the, the newer tanks we've been putting in since two thousand and seven, we've had very little problem with. Their monolithic concrete tank, uh, their vacuum test when we put them in. What we have more problem with are, are the converted septic tanks that were put in in nineteen fifty, that they converted in the eighties to step tanks. Those are the ones we have trouble with.
Are you doing any of those laters, those retro laters?
We're, we're doing a lot of retro work as we can. Uh, we've been able, a couple times in the last ten years, we've worked with the county with some CDBG projects. Uh, since out of the city limits, we, we can't really use our CDBG money, but we've been able to partner with the county and do some CDBG work to actually take CDBG funding to completely outfit existing step systems. So we identified the ones that were put in in the fifties, or give us a lot of problems with influence infiltration, and work with the county to get those replaced at no cost to the homeowner.
Mr. Stevens, when you first got to New Bern, do you remember we were, the board at that time was looking at not expanding step and trying to move a main of eight-inch toilet line over there and start doing gravity?
I think, I think it refers back to the situation that, that Jordan was, I think our sewer system was, our sewer system was in a completely different existing state then than it is now, and that was the reason through the improvements, or I guess some of the modifications that were done to the system, as well as the, the basins that we have over there, and the transfer into our existing gravity system allowed us to then open up the potential for having the infill residential development. Uh, back before that, there was a, pretty much a moratorium that was set on that step system because of the issues that they were having with it, and the fact that, uh, the increased capacity would have continued to make it and exacerbate the issues that they were having. But through some changes that were made through the system for the step system, uh, that was, that was the improvements that were made, helped allow this, this infill development. Now, I think as far as the, getting the gravity sewer, I think, as Jordan mentioned, we, we have a place where that stuff's set up, it's not being utilized at this time. Um, but, you know, third, I guess it really becomes more of a mentality of what does the board wanna do with this area.
The board wants to be a little more educated in this tonight on this subject. A part of it would be a twelve, twenty thousand dollar study where a consultant comes in and looks at that before we expand it and says, whether or not it's a moneymaker or a deal breaker. And we don't have that information, and this, this is the kind of thing that the board makes decisions on sometimes, and doesn't have active information, because it's not asking the questions before. It obligates itself to provide sewer to areas like this, which there's limited revenue, revenue sources for, you know, I, I don't know what the cost of gathering of sewer is over here to treat, and we just, you know, I'm not gonna vote on it tonight, but y'all can, want to.
I'll adjourn now. You hadn't failed me yet. So usually when you talk about things like this, this is way above my pay grade. Um, but I understand, I am sympathetic to what the mayor has to say about annexing people in who are using our sewer system. And I, I agree, we had talked about sewer down that, that way, Mayor, uh, during my time on the board that I served with you, um, and that's when we put the policy in place that said, no sewer without annexation, because we knew how valuable it was. Uh, but I am concerned, as I, I did talk to you about this previously, that side of, of the road of seventy, what it would really cost at this point to, uh, to do that, and the services we'd have to provide. Now, my question is, uh, how much, I mean, we, we benefit, even though it's the step system, do we benefit? Are they charged a monthly fee, and we...
Yes, ma'am.
So we're receiving revenue from that?
Yes, ma'am.
We're not, not the tax revenue, but the revenue from that.
That is correct.
And we have to get a meter reading from the county on the water to know what to charge on the sewer, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And on the, on the bottom side, this little belt right here, is why we self-imposed a moratorium on ourselves years ago, because that Croatan, whatever Woods, or whatever that is, we had a major issue with boys over in Little Washington, that there was some step-related issues there, as I recall. And that was part of our self-imposed moratorium, uh, because we got, I don't remember if it was a ninety day or suspension of any future use at that time, but again...
Mayor, don't you, don't you think that if there is some continued development on that side of the street that's on the step, as people want to develop and continue, and that's all that's left there, they're gonna, they're gonna eventually say, hey, tell me what it costs, I want the sewer. They may pay the development fees to bring it in. I don't, you know, it's based on demand.
With that map right there, you're basically saying, everybody on this side, in the white area, it's nothing. You're basically saying, well, listen, we wanna come, we want some sewer, but we want some of that red sewer. We don't want none of that green sewer, cause if we get that green sewer, we got to get annexed. But if we get some of that red sewer, we, we don't have to get annexed.
But I would rather have a sewer system than a step system, every done.
Yeah, but George, if I understood Jordan correctly, we're not expanding the red.
That, that is correct. Everything shown in red, I would say this is eighty, eighty to eighty-five percent already developed. The mains are in place, houses are there, people have been on the system lots of them since the early eighties. Um, the only thing that you can do in that red is, if you've got a lot between two other lots, and that may be a quarter acre, that may be a half acre, that may be two acres, but there's a lot of infill development that still has to take place. So the only thing you can do in that red is build on that lot, and, and the, the conditions of that are very limited. It limits you to, you know, essential, basic residential construction. I think we will allow duplex, if you've got a big enough parcel, we'll allow a duplex on there, and some very limited commercial. Aside from that, if you wanna do anything else in that red area, and you want New Bern sewer, you come talk to us about how to connect to the conventional, and then we go through the process of the water and sewer use agreement, and we can, we can go through that whole process, and come before the board, and then the board gets to decide, is it, is it worth the, the benefit at that point to annex that parcel, give them the sewer, or not? That, that is the, that, that is the, the decision the board gets to make at that point. Most of what we've seen in that red area, um, in the last, you know, since two thousand and seven, the only thing I can think of that's been built in the red area that would, that, and actually, it is, is connected to the conventional system, was the, the old Best Western Hotel, it's, it's something else now, Comfort Suites maybe. Um, that's the only type of development on that side of seventy that's been built in the last thirteen years or so, that was, you know, big enough development that they had to connect to, and that was back in two thousand and eight or two thousand and nine.
But that one didn't connect the step, I don't believe. That never ran a...
No, sir. They've got their own pump station.
... primary line all the way back to that lift, that force magnet.
That's correct. And that's before we had our current policies in place that we have now, that would require the sewer use agreement and their, the annexation.
And that developer paid for the cost.
They, they did. They paid for all the infrastructure. We have a very nice water and sewer customer out of it, but they are outside of the city limits. Uh, today, if they wanted to do, if somebody found a, a five-acre parcel over there, and there are not many of them, uh, they found one, they wanna do something very similar, they'd come to us, and they'd have to enter into the water and sewer's agreement, and with that, we'd come to, come to the board, and, you know, they plead their case about what they want to do, and it'd be up to the board to decide, yea or nay, whether to provide them access to the conventional system and annex the property.
Jordan, um, are you still meeting with that stakeholder group, you know, you used to have that working group?
As needed, yes, ma'am. We, we don't do it on a regular basis anymore. Everybody's time is pretty valuable, respecting those guys' times.
Did they have a look at, at this?
They did, yes, ma'am. Every bit of this has been forwarded to them, the red line, um, uh, bullet points of kind of what the changes were, got a few very minor comments back, more of them typographical comments, um, nothing substantial that changes anything in the finished document.
Okay. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the amendments to the City of New Bern water and sewer design standards.
Second.
Motion and second, is there discussion? See, and I understand, roll comms starting with Orderman Odom.
Orderman Odom?
Yes.
Orderman Best?
Yes.
Orderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Atwell?
No.
Orderman Astor?
Yes.
Orderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Orderman Beagle?
Yes.
Question carries, I have number twelve.
Thank you, Mayor. I have number twelve. This is a resolution approving a memorandum of agreement with the North Carolina Office of Recovery and Residency for a grant award. Uh, the city has been awarded three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars grant from the, uh, North Carolina Office of Recovery and Residencies Distressed Local Government Program. This award will be used to support the city's residency recovery and mitigation efforts over the next three years through the hiring of a consultant to assist with...
over the next three years through the hiring of a consultant to assist staff and managing such projects that will fall underneath some of our resiliency program. Three hundred thousand dollars will be used for the capacity building measures and the remaining balance will be put towards a vehicle to fund, help support these efforts. Amanda is here to answer any kind of questions that you may have. There's a memo that's included in your packet and we're happy to answer your questions.
Okay, the board have questions?
Mark, or Amanda, somebody, I'm, I'm still a little confused about the three hundred thousand dollars. Is that, does that hire a temporary person? Does that hire a consultant? And this truck is for that person when that three years is up? I mean, this is supposed to just be a truck for three years? It gives them a vehicle? Could you explain that a little bit better to me?
Yes, so the three hundred thousand dollars will go toward building capacity and assisting staff with a variety of activities related to the city's recovery and resiliency initiatives. So, separate from hiring one person to do that job over the next three years, it would be to hire a firm that would have expertise in all different kinds of services that, that will utilize in our recovery and mitigation process. So they may have expertise in planning or engineering, even GIS support. So it'll kind of encompass all of the activities and projects that we're undertaking at the current time as well as help us manage grants that we've received or help pursue other grants in addition to the things that staff is doing currently. The vehicle itself will be a vehicle that will be four-wheel drive capable to get to the different sites throughout our city, especially some of those that are very flood prone. And we will retain that vehicle after the end of this three-year term. So it'll be used to help go to sites throughout the city and, you know, even for activities that, you know, may be education-related to help us with our recovery and resiliency work.
Now, does that work side by side with the grant that we got previously to do a study?
Yes.
So this, this will work side by side?
Yes.
This would be the firm that would help potentially implement or work on implementation of what the study comes out?
Right, correct. So the work of the development of our resiliency and hazard mitigation plan has already begun. And then, you know, from that plan, which we estimated would be about a twelve-month process, we'll have a variety of implementation steps, many of which we're, we're undertaking right now knowing in advance of what some of those, those goals will be.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, the board have questions?
Mayor, if not, I'd like to make a motion, we adopt a resolution approving a memorandum of agreement with the North Carolina Office of Recovery and Resilience for a grant award.
Second. Motion, second is their discussion. See, and let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number thirteen.
Thank you, Mayor, item number thirteen is an amendment to the capital project ordinance for the Resiliency and Hazard Mitigation Plan Grant Project Fund. The Resiliency and Hazard Mitigation Plan Grant Project Fund needs to be amended to recognize the three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars in grant funds that we just previously approved, as well as seventy thousand dollars for the state's environmental enhancement grant program to support phase two of our resiliency plan and five thousand dollars from the North Carolina Department of Cultural Resources to support the phase one of the resiliency plan. There's a memo that's included for Ms. Hogan, our finance director, in your packet and we're happy to answer any questions.
Board have questions?
Mark, I would just make one comment. I received a couple of questions about some of these grants. If there was a way that, you know, maybe we could do like a quick fact summary about, you know, what we've been awarded, what it's gonna do and what projected timelines and outcomes would be, I think that would be helpful for the public.
I, I definitely can do that. I know that Margaret keeps a running list of all the different grants that we've received and she periodically sends that to me so I can very easily do that. We can get it updated and we'll send it out to the board to, to help with that.
And Mark, this is another grant that's for side by side with the same.
This, this is just recognizing the dollars that we have received from different grants we've applied for, three different grants. The one that you just approved, the three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars, there's one that we had already previously been awarded for seventy thousand and then another one for five thousand, which is a Duke Energy Grant. All of those going towards resiliency, either the resiliency plan or the side-by-side efforts of, of the resiliency and mitigation efforts of the three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars you approved.
Mark, is, is what we just talked about with the grants, is that something, we could have a webpage or, you know, where you could click on it, says grants and we could list that? Or is that not, you know, once they're received and adopted? I'm just wondering if we're getting questions, would that be a place for our citizens to be able to look and see the grants that we've received and where they're going to?
Sure, certainly we could, we could do that. I know we post about every one that we received on social media, but I, I'm happy to find someplace on our website, maybe under the Board of Aldermen.
Maybe under Development Services, have a drop-down that says resiliency and then list all this information. Because there's this impression that we're not doing a whole lot. And I think that's the wrong impression because there's a lot going on.
I can assure you, there's a lot going on.
There's no questions, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, we adopt an amendment to the capital project ordinance for the Resiliency and Hazard Mitigation Plan Grant Project Fund.
Second. Motion and second is their discussion. See, and let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Now, this next one is, is really, is really, a really good one, isn't it? Thank you, thank you so much, staff and Alderman. Item fourteen.
Item number fourteen, Mayor, is a resolution authorizing the implementation of credit card services for payment of utility bills and city fees. Currently, the city uses a third-party vendor to accept debit and credit cards for payment and utility costs to city fees. The vendors charge a convenience fee for the customer and there's no cost to the city. However, staff has identified several benefits for both the city and its customers if the service were provided in-house. To accomplish this, card machine readers need to be provided at the, at the, or UBO. The cost of that is one thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. The city will also incur recurring charges of six ninety-five a month for the PCI compliance fee and there will be a small fee for each transaction. Ms. Hogan is here tonight and she is, there she is, she was hiding behind Bobby. Bobby's black mask was in the way. So she's got a quick PowerPoint that she's gonna go over and just kind of give you some details, but we, we're very excited about this and then I'll provide this to our colleagues.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. So, I would like to first of all, let you know that beginning July one, we have separated UBO and the Customer and Payment Services. So the new name for the services happening at Fort Totten is CACS, Customer and Payment Services. So that's how we're gonna start referring that. You'll start seeing that. UBO has moved to Kail Road and they changed it actually from Utility Business Office, I think, to Utility Business Operations. So just want to let you know, we have made the split, we're calling it divorce around the office. So I think that that became official on July one. So just so you know, the, the new name and, and we'll be changing some of our letterhead and stuff to reflect that change. So one of the first sort of points of order we're looking at is trying to provide opportunities for people to make their payments, their, their monthly utility payments and not have to come into our office and/or come through our drive-through. I think that the COVID-nineteen changes that have been going on there and not having people actually come in the building have really exacerbated this. Many of you may have seen, if you've driven by there on a busy day, it's, it's, it's a mess with, it's a mess with the traffic. It's a mess with the customers. Often they're waiting fifteen, thirty minutes in line just to make a payment. They will call often ahead of time, say, I want to come get in your line, can I play by, pay by credit card? Our answer is, you can go online and pay by credit card. We do accept credit card payments, but that goes to a third party. It's a four dollar and ninety-five cent charge. People would rather wait in line for thirty minutes than pay the five dollar fee. So, we have talked to our local bank about what, what the cost would be to us, what the benefits would be to us. It's really a service we're offering to the customers. I would say, I would tell you that I spend about sixty percent of my time currently working in the, at the Fort Totten office. And four or five or six times a day, I hear the staff say, I'm sorry, we don't take credit cards, you have to go online, I'm sorry. We, there's, it's a big request, I think, for it. So I do think the customers would appreciate the service and I think they would utilize it. This first one I want to show you, we do offer several opportunities to pay that are not necessarily coming into the Fort Totten office. They can pay at Walmart or any food lines, particularly Wiggly's, basically any Western Union payments site they, they can go to. There is a fee and they, and most of those take cash only, but that's an opportunity for them to pay somewhere else. They can also, as we, as I mentioned before, pay with our online, pay by credit card online. And then those other ways, obviously, they can mail it in, they can do bank draft, they can pay in person. And we also have the app, the PrePay app, and that's free for people to use. We have about seventy current, seventy customers using that one. So, we would like to propose that we do utilize the services of our current bank. It would, it does not require a contract, it's just an additional service. They would, they would, they would provide to us, they would provide the machines. It's, we would, we are looking at a need for six machines. I would like to say that we also, in addition to the four at Fort Totten, the Development Services staff have indicated some interest that this would be beneficial to their customers as well. So we're looking at putting four at Fort Totten and then four at, over at Jeffrey's office for, for his customers at will.
Mayor, how about Parks and Recreation?
They currently have a credit card system and so do the police department, so those are, so.
So those departments are ahead of everybody else, huh? Is that what you're saying?
I don't know. I wasn't, I wasn't here when that happened. I'm in the storeroom.
Didn't realize that. Why was it so easy for them to have it and we didn't have it on the other side?
We're catching up. Yeah, I don't, I don't know why we didn't have it. And, and I don't know a utility company, to be honest with you, that doesn't take it, but I'm certain there was a good reason somewhere in the past. I just haven't done that kind of research yet. Anyway, the one-time cost for the devices, as Mark said, three hundred and fifty bucks a piece. Actually, First Citizens says they're gonna gift one of the machines to us so we, we don't have to, we only have to buy five instead of four. And then there's a small fee of six dollars and ninety-five cents a month, which is for PCI compliance. That's not per machine, that's in total, so, so that's, that's a non-issue in my opinion, seven dollars a month for, for that. There also is gonna be a per transaction card fee. And this is a little complicated and a little tricky to try to estimate what these costs will be. It depends on how the person pays. The more secure the payment is, the less fee we pay. If they actually bring a debit card in, we swipe it and they use a pin, they punch their pin in, that's the cheapest way. Well, we're trying to get people not to come in. So there, there's gonna be some people, once we open back up to the public and/or in Jeff's case, that will be paying the lowest fee. There's also the fee, if they hand the card to us through the window, we swipe it, we send something back out to them for them to sign, that's a little bit, that's sort of the medium charge. The most expensive is if they call us on the telephone and give us their credit card number over the phone and amount and we swipe it and without them present, that's the most expensive. Our average bill, when I, we first presented this, we were looking up through May's data, our average bill was about three hundred bucks a month. And so we're looking at three, four dollars and eighty-nine cents is what it would cost the city for the average person to pay their bill. It's still cheaper than the four ninety-five that they're paying, but also they're paying the four ninety-five and I'm, I'm recommending that we pay the four eighty-nine, so, so it's not really a comparison there. But it is still a cheaper transaction. I would like to say that in this year's budget for the UBO office, which, when we were doing this budget and sort of separating it, there were some, some, some staff's costs, some savings from staff costs that I recommended in the budget to go towards using it for year one of this program to see what it actually is gonna cost us. I've got about sixty thousand dollars budgeted, I do not believe it's gonna cost that much, but once again, I don't know. Best case scenario is every single one of our customers would start paying by credit card. And then it would actually cost us a little bit more money, but I think the benefits still are gonna outweigh that. After year one, I think we'll do, we'll, we'll reevaluate and see, is it gonna cost it? Is the cost gonna be worth the benefit? And I think we make the decision. But I do think it's something we need to sort of get on board with, make an attempt, see how well it works and then go from there. We will have plenty of time to make the decision if we, if we decide it's too pricey. Here's a couple of the benefits that are, that are gonna, that are quite significant in my department anyway. The decrease in the non-sufficient fund checks, we have large number of checks that come back. Getting the money right up front, being able to verify, does a credit card run? Is it a good check, good a credit card or not? Having the money put in the bank today is a great benefit. It decreases mailing times, it lowers our lockbox fees. People get their bill in the mail and they mail it and they use that envelope and they mail it to Charlotte, we're charged for that. It also increases our available days cash on hand, which you all know is, is a big number for us and that's important to us. And the sooner we get our money and we get all of the money up front, the more beneficial it is to us, not just for our credit and worthiness if nothing else. It's convenience to people who primarily used debit and credit cards and cash. And I will tell you, and you know this, I don't need to tell you this. So many people don't use cash and don't even have a checkbook anymore. I mean, we, we live in a plastic age. Decreasing the liability of the cash on premises, I can't tell you how valuable that is. At the end of the day, having to count it and recount it, most of the money's counted at least three times a day. Then we put it in a bag, we take it to the bank, they count it. It's just being able to eliminate that time, that liability. If somebody were to break into our office at nighttime, they're not gonna get cash because they're gonna get credit card receipts, so we're not gonna be losing anything. The cash is already in the bank by the time they break in and steal something from us. And it also reduces staff time, just handling the cash, counting the cash, making the deposits. There's just so many advantages to this. The last thing I would like to show you, we, we did call around to some of the other cities and towns in our area and basically here's, here's what they charge their customers for, for using a credit card. So, Spaceville does charge, the other three, they don't. They just absorb the cost into their, actually into their fees. I'm gonna guess ultimately that's where it would go. I'm not recommending any fee increases at this time. Once again, I'd like to see what happens after year one. And then we would, we would talk about it at that point after we evaluate the first year. That's all I got, any questions?
Excellent job. I can't believe it took us this long to get here. Go ahead.
I would just make a comment that whenever we looked at the deposit issue several years ago, this was one of the caveats of us moving toward that was to be able to accept credit cards because it, it makes it easy for people who may be in a bind to put it on a credit card. They have terms, they have options to pay for versus using the city essentially as their bank. My, my only concern, and I support the program, my only concern is what you mentioned. Somebody that's maybe doing bank draft now, if they realize that they can pay with a credit card and get airline miles or points or whatever, are we paying a percentage of the transaction fee in addition to that fee?
In addition to what fee?
So.
The only fee we're paying is the one that I showed you.
So right now we do four ninety-five flat?
We don't pay that.
Well, the customer pays it, right.
That, that fee will go away.
So do we pay, do we get a hundred percent of what that money is on their bill that's owed? Or do we pay any sort of fee to the bank for that money that goes from that process?
We just pay these, these percentages. So if somebody comes in and pays their bill, three hundred dollar bill to us, we're gonna pay a dollar fifty to the credit card company, the merchant services, which is, which is going through First Citizens.
So our, our large commercial customers could theoretically start paying with a credit card each month and it would definitely increase our rates.
It would increase our charges, it would increase the expenses.
It would decrease the amount of money we take in. Because we're gonna subtract.
It would cost us more.
Yeah, correct, absolutely.
That's my only concern.
But we would have the money faster.
Yeah.
It would be more secure, it would be, you know, on time, real-time money. As soon as we swipe, as soon as we swipe the card, it's our money. So that, you know, and also, once again, if it's no good, we know it's no good, we can deal with that then.
I think it would be extremely helpful is whatever reasonable six, nine, twelve months down the road, we have an update to this so you can give us some information so we don't do what we did last time and implement policies contingent upon other things happening that just never did.
But no, that would be, yeah, because I, I do think that the cost control would be an issue. At some point, if it would be too successful and everybody used it, it would look, we'd be looking at rates to help pay for. We'd help to offset it with the rates. I mean, that would be what, that would be the requirement of the utility fund.
Mayor, why wouldn't you look at a system that you could, an e-commerce system that you could do through our website? Because then somebody could go online, we do it everywhere now, you buy something, you go in line, you type in your credit card, that's all PCI compliance. It would be just like using the debit card in person because you're there, it's taking care of it. Then still nobody touches it and you don't have this useless card, no, you know, by phone.
And, and that's the goal. And, and actually they are in just at the beginning stages of implementing the Munis Utility Billing System that will allow us to do that. And initially I was gonna hold off on this process and wait for that and kind of do it together and combined. But that's gonna be a year or eighteen months down the road and there's seemed to be some, some, some interest in doing it sooner. So we have this, and once again, this is not a contractual obligation. Once Munis is up and going, I really want the billing, I want to get, have them be successful at that Once Munis is up and going, I, I really want the billing, I want to get, have them be successful at that before we then start tangling up with this stuff. Um, but, yeah, we would, we would look at absolutely doing that. And that would, we would offer, be able to offer that through the Munis program, but we're still, I think, about, of that process.
So, customers that currently pay online now and pay the four ninety-five fee, is that option still gonna be available until we...
Yeah, it, it can, we can stop that. It's, that's, that's up to us, we, we have the choice to continue that. Um, but, yeah, but then we'll be able to pay on...
You, I don't know how many customers pay that way, but you'd be increasing your staff time to handle calls and visits to pay with a credit card, whereas now they're paying with a credit card online and you don't touch it or have any...
Yeah, very few do. That's the few, that, that, yeah, they would rather drive down and pay it in person or, or put it in the night drop, another thing that we, you know.
Because they don't wanna pay it at four ninety-five.
They do not. A few of them will go pay the two dollars at Walmart or Piggly Wiggly. We have, that's probably, we have probably more people who will go there and pay through Western Union than we do actually online. But, but those folks, once again, have to pay cash only. They don't take checks or credit cards when you go to those other establishments to make the payments.
So, so for right now, this is, this is gonna be implemented when?
We, we, we can get the machines within a week. So, it, we weren't, I wasn't giving them a day till after tonight.
Okay. So, it's still not gonna, if they're gonna come and use their credit card, it's still not gonna really free up customers, the customer service location with the customers. You're gonna still have employees that's gonna have to wait on these customers, 'cause they're using their credit card.
By, by phone are coming in, correct, yeah, yeah, they're still, but they're not gonna have to count it and reconcile it.
Okay, consider from that, that point.
Take care of all those issues and the, the risk of it. And right now, like I said, with the COVID thing and trying to, trying to count money with gloves on your hands and, it's, you know, it's a daily. It's, it'd be nice to kind of get rid of that altogether, to be honest with you.
So, for right now, we're gonna, well, after tonight, or whenever we approve this, we're gonna be absorbing the costs.
Correct, with some savings.
And then down the line, down the road, you can come back and give us a figure on what it was gonna, it's gonna cost us monthly or quarterly or whatever. And then at that time, we can make a decision whether we want to absorb the cost, period, and not put it back on the customer.
Correct.
Okay.
And there's, we have options to do. I don't know if you don't charge them upfront, if, if we can go back to that, that's tough to do, so we think about that. Some cities will just charge a flat out ninety-nine cents. Doesn't matter what, there's, doesn't matter how much, a ten-dollar bill or a hundred thousand dollar bill. It's, you know, they just charge us something to recoup, so we can look at making some of those options as well.
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds like a plan.
A small amount that people don't object to, but it's not, so, but it's, yeah, it's, it's not totally absorbed by the, by the enterprise fund itself, so...
Yeah, that, that office is, really was in dire need of, um, some free time.
We're, we're working on it.
They are working, they have worked over there in that office for years, I mean, really hard. That, we have, we had a good staff over there with some of the employees.
We're averaging around between four, four and five thou, between five and six thousand cars per month coming through those windows right now. That's, if you think about it per minute, that's a pretty...
Well, Mr. Mayor, there's no other discussion.
Thank you.
I would like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution authorizing the implementation of the credit card service for payments of the utility bills and city fees.
Second.
Motion and second is a discussion. See, and let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number fifteen.
Thank you, Mayor, item number fifteen is amendment to capital project ordinance for the two thousand nineteen electric improvements project fund. Uh, the city has received a three hundred and twenty thousand dollar grant from the Golden Leaf Foundation. These funds will be used to elevate identified electrical boxes and components to prevent future flood damage and increase the system reliability during storm events. There's a memo that's been included in your packet from Ms. Hogan, uh, representing the amendment necessary for this change, so we'll answer any questions you may have.
Okay, or have questions?
Mayor, if not, I'd like to make a motion, we adopt an amendment to the capital project ordinance for two thousand nineteen electric improvement projects fund.
Second. Motion and second is a discussion. See, and then, on favorite, uh, not on favorite motion, but let's start with a roll call with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number sixteen.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, item number sixteen is consideration of the board to adopt a resolution to include the redevelopment commission in the city's budgeting and accounting system. Uh, as you know, the board adopted an ordinance on the eighth of May, two thousand nineteen, to create the redevelopment commission for the city of New Bern. Chapter one sixty-eight of North Carolina general statutes allows the operations of a redevelopment commission to be budgeted and accounted for in the city's budgeting and accounting system. Uh, city manager and director of finance are required to administer and control that portion of the budget. Uh, this resolution establishes the commission as part of the city's budget. There's a memo that's included in your packet from Ms. Hogan, uh, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have regarding this.
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I'm just, would like to get a better, a better understanding on why, um, the redevelopment commission is wanting the, um, us for their, for their funds to be, um, under the city budget and why they don't have their own, um, type of function?
Um, well, that, that's definitely one methodology in which it can be done, um, but there's going to be extensive costs, uh, because they will have to have, uh, accounting staff, financing staff, they'll have to audit their own books, uh, which ultimately means they're gonna have to generate their own revenue somehow, because they'll have to pay for those services. And to date, as you know, they basically have been charged with this task of coming up with a redevelopment plan, uh, but they do not have a revenue stream. So, therefore, the revenue stream, uh, at this point, that's kind of been identified and discussed by the board, was the Carolina, the sale of the Carolina Avenue property and then also some of the individual residential lot assets that would be transferred to them and potentially commercial assets that would be transferred to them that's within the redevelopment commission, uh, or commission plan area. Uh, until that point happens and they start generating money, then technically, they don't have the authority or the ability to make offer on any kind of properties, uh, as far as purchases or any kind of improvements that they wanna do or any of that kind of stuff. So, it kind of is a difficult situation for them to be in, to have a plan and be looking to say, "Hey, we wanna acquire this dilapidated piece of property over here, so that we can put it together and do this," because every single thing has to come before this board to be adopted and approved and, and ultimately, because they need a fund or a number amount in order to be able to expend it. So, the way you solve that is by developing a department for them to operate from. Or, we could do it in the other way, where you just say, "Hey, you make your own money, y'all do your own thing." But then, you know, that, that obviously is a tough situation for them to be in right now.
I have a follow-up question to that, um...
I, I still have another question. So, um, so basically, once they start to bring in income and things like that, do they still have to come to us to get approval to purchase property or purchase land or do something?
I, I think what would happen, and this would be my, my thoughts and my vision, is kind of treating, treating it very similar in nature to what, uh, let's, let's call it the municipal service district does. They develop a plan, that plan would potentially, um, and, and they don't always do this, and I, I, I see, I see, uh, Alderman Bingle...
Because it's much different, I mean...
It is different, but I'm trying to use it as, I'm trying to, I'm trying to give an example that's gonna be as close as I can get it to. It, it's gonna be different, there's no doubt.
It's the housing authority under the city of New Bern is really kind of that same function, but we control, I, I mean, we, they have a line item and a fund, but they're an independent, they're an independent body by statute. They're an independent body by statute.
I'm happy to do whatever the board, I mean, this, this is the way we think it's gonna be best managed as far as their funds and as far as everything else, but I'm happy to do whatever the board wants to do. If y'all want autonomous, that takes the load off of me, that's for sure.
But I have a question, though, we have a line item, we have a line item for...
My last follow-up would just be, uh, my thought on that is, like Alderman Bingle was saying, that they're considered an independent body. I just wanna make sure that that is clear to the public, that they're still an independent, independent body, so there's not any confusion like how it was with the housing authority with certain things like that. So, that, that was my only trying to understand the necessity, but I get what you're saying, Mark, because it makes it more conducive for us to already have it going. It makes no sense for them to redevelop it, um, in regards to having to worry about the finances and stuff. So, I just, I just wanted to get clarity.
I just think until the point to where they have a, a, a revenue stream to operate from and someone who is going to manage all of that accounting, we, you and I sit on the TDA board, and we know exactly what we're dealing with right now with the TDA board, not having an executive director, your chairman and the vice chairman are having to do all this work, that this is gonna be the best managed practice for us to be able to, to manage their money. Now, they may come up with their own plan, they're their own entity, they do their own thing. They would just submit that as a departmental request that would be included as part of the, the city's budget and approved. Other than that, it is, hey, our hands are off of it, give them this and they go. And then, it's just, to me, they're gonna be spending that four hundred some thousand dollars if the board's intent is to give them the Carolina Avenue money. They're just gonna be spending that down in auditing services and everything else instead of things necessary to do the improvements in this community.
Okay, so my fa, my follow-up question was, um, this motion is to create a line item, is that correct, Mary? Is to create a line item for this?
It creates the department, essentially.
But I thought we had a line, last year, we appropriated, Jeff was at forty thousand or forty-two... So, it's different, that's what I was confused, 'cause we had a line item that said redevelopment commission, and had forty some thousand.
That was under Jeff's Development Services Department, when he was operating to kind of give them some money to kind of get going and stuff. This keeps them autonomous and out of the rest of his department's budget.
I get it.
So, now, um, to piggyback on what, um, Alderman Harris says, for as, when they receive this money, of course, okay? So, would they still have to come, any finalized plans that they come, any projects or anything that they have to bring forth for as, would they have to come out before this board to get approved?
I think the whole point of recreating the redevelopment commission was to give them the autonomy to operate and do at their discretion. But this board, if, if y'all feel the need to change that, then the board needs to take that.
I think, Scott, you need to speak to us, because this is a state statute issue.
Yeah, um, everyone's right. They, they, they've got no money right now, so they have to come to you for permission. They might spend this money and run out, in which case, they have to come back for more money and get your permission. So, in that sense, yes, you have some control, ultimately, if they have no money. But in a perfect world, if the vision comes to pass, they make these investments, they get grants, they enter into development projects, they find revenue streams, and they are self-sustaining like a housing authority. And your job is to make sure they execute the plan that you've already approved, in a perfect world.
I have another follow-up question, listening to that. My, um, follow-up question would be is, um, I know that we have our fund balance and we're utilizing this as a line item, um, and if we start taking in their funds and they start getting in grants, that obviously will increase our city budget. And if we try to apply for things, um, would it ne, negatively affect us as whether we have a healthy budget or not? Because we're also indicating on the balance sheet their money, even though it's not technically ours, it's for them to decide within the preview, preview of the redevelopment, redevelopment on how to use it?
I, I understand the question. Mary, did you understand the question? If, by run, the city is gonna be providing, in my mind, I see this as the city is, is providing the backroom accounting services for the redevelopment commission. And you're gonna create a department, wherever you're gonna create, our auditors will know that is an accounting function that we are providing for this other public body, and that money is not co-mingled or considered part of our general fund balance. Is that right or not?
That's not right.
That's not right?
It will be part of our general fund, it will be approved by the board as part of our annual budget, and it will be approved, and then every purchase or requisition will be approved by either the city manager or his designate name, and I will then pre-odd it, so it would be treated very similar to the other books of the, of the, of the, of the city.
Okay.
It's not a separate fund, it's not separated in, in any way in that way.
Okay, 'cause I, I think I, I, I don't know, I think I would need more discussion on that or to better understand, because I just, you know, I want us to continue to stay step separate. That's the reason why we voted and created the redevelopment commission, is for them to stand on their own. And granted, I know that we, you know, have, um, allocated money to them and where money's gonna come in and things, and I just want it to be that they're operating on their own, but also, I don't want them to have to go out and get, you know, a, a whole team to be able to, um, you know, take care of the funds. Um, I just, you know, I just don't want it to affect us as the board for the city budget, anything that we're trying to do or we're trying to give grants, if our fund balance is starting to look more than what it is, even though those funds are not necessarily for us, they're for the redevelopment. So, that's my only comment.
I believe we've gotta get them started. If we don't get them started, we're never gonna get anywhere. And so, with that being said, um, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to include the redevelopment commission in the city's budgeting and accounting systems.
I second that.
Motion and second is their discussion.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm, I'm a little confused myself now. I thought I understood this before, but now I'm not so sure I do. So, when we are essentially going to provide the redevelopment commission with the four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, what Mary's saying is, it's not changing bank accounts. It's gonna continue to sit in the city's bank account, but yet, they have the authority to spend up to that amount of money.
That's right.
But the staff time that it's gonna take, if they wanna go acquire property or do anything else, they're also using our resources, which will come out of that pool of money. Is that the way I'm understanding this?
I, I don't really answer that question. I, I'm not, I'm not sure, we're, we're not gonna have an internal charge or internal accounting fee for the back...
So, so we, we charge every other department a administrative fee. We're not doing that for the redevelopment commission, we're doing that in kind.
That's my understanding.
Okay. Okay, let me stop there for a second, get my thoughts together.
Maybe, maybe it might help, um, just real quickly, and, and I'm gonna say things to Brenda, 'cause she sent this real quickly to me. General Statute one sixty-eight dash five oh five point one, commission budgeting and accounting systems is part of a municipality budgeting and accounting system. Governing body of municipality may by resolution provide that the budgeting and accounting systems of the municipality's redevelopment commission, or if this, if the municipality's housing authority is exercising the powers, duties and responsibilities of the redevelopment commission, the budgeting and accounting systems of the housing authority shall be an integral part of the budgeting and accounting systems of the municipality if such a reason, if such a resolution is adopted. One, for purposes of local government budget and fiscal control act, the commission and authority shall not be considered a public authority as that phrase is defined in General Statute one fifty-nine dash seven D, but rather shall be considered a department or agency of the municipality. Uh, the operations of the commission or the authority shall be budgeted and accounted for as if the operations were those of a public enterprise of the municipality.
So, that means that the mayor or the city manager has to execute documents based off of our purchasing policy. Is that purchasing policy gonna apply to the redevelopment commission? It will. So, they're not as autonomous as we think they are.
You know, I, I, I keep going back to the, the statute that, that gives the city a choice of a housing authority, and it would be as its own independent standalone body, which it leaves us, you know, a department of the city or a redevelopment commission. So, that really doesn't say the redevelopment commission is part of the city, it just gives it as a different thing. So, I guess that's where the confusion is really coming from.
The, the statute's written so that we can't offer these services in a loosey-goosey way outside of our own controls, right? When we take their money, we apply all the highest standards as if it were our own money. And, and I think the hair splitting is, this is with total deference to the commission. Even though staff signs off and has to do things to control and account for the money, to protect it, that is not a, a discretionary sign-off, where the city manager or somebody else says, "We don't think so, you shouldn't buy the cups today."
That's gotta be clear, I think.
Yes.
The chair, the chair of the redevelopment commission is here, I'm sure if we have any questions for Chairman Lee.
I have, someone called me today and saying that they read that we're gonna give the redevelopment this money. And they saying, well, I was trying to listen to try to answer their question that we're giving some, uh, organization money to go in to buy property, not in the flood zone, but in high, in a higher level, grounds are higher, that, uh, if the houses are in there, it's fifty thousand dollars, when they go in there and, and purchase this property and they come back and rebuild, the houses are probably a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The folks won't be able to come back in to afford a home. Then they went to say, if they're paying three hundred dollars a month for rent and they come in and build apartments for fifteen hundred dollars, they won't be able to come back and live in that community. So, that's something that you guys are gonna stand for and control. At that point, I told them that... At that point, I told them that I don't understand that part there. So I don't think that it's gonna be like that. I said, they already have a plan written up, but they feel that we're throwing money away to move people out of the community that, uh, someone could come in and, and not have a chance to come back in to live in that community again. So they said, so say for instance, if the, uh, the, the rental decide to fall in the same place that it wants buzz, they say it's gonna start all over again. I didn't, I, I was, I didn't know how to answer that part. I said, well, I don't know. They say, well, they don't own it, so why should they take care of it? It made sense there. So, where do the control come in at? That was my, that's my, that's my, uh, question.
Uh, thank you, Alderman Kinsey. A great, great question. I hear that a lot also. Um, the redevelopment plan is very specific in the, in the clientele that we'll be serving with the new housing developments. And that's all gonna be low, moderate income with later on maybe getting into workforce development type housing. So your example of somebody coming that's paying three hundred dollars a month and a new apartment or a new home or something is going to rent for fifteen hundred dollars a month, is, won't, doesn't apply in this situation? We'll, we'll simply be using, um, we've been using the section eight voucher program as a model for our income streams. Section eight is all handled, um, at a, by, between rivers essentially where people come out of there, they go in there and, uh, they meet with twin rivers and they determine how much of their income that they have, they can pay for rent. Whether it's a hundred dollars, whether it's two hundred dollars, and they receive a voucher for the increment. And HUD has specific rules based on what you can rent a two, gonna go a three to two and one bedroom apartment for. So it's anywhere from twelve hundred to about seven hundred and fifty dollars, right? So that's what the market is. So person receive, whether they are paying a dollar for rent or four hundred dollars for rent, they receive a voucher for that difference. So their rent will not change. For, they may be living in a dilapidated home right now with holes in the roof and holes in the floor, where the AC that doesn't work. They'll be moving into brand-new housing that's energy efficient, um, we're paying the same amount.
I have another question.
If that's clear.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I don't know if this is for Scott or Mary, but my last question, um, kinda piggybacking off of what Alderman Kinsey said. Say the redevelopment purchases a property and then turns it into rental, and now they become property management. When those funds come in, they have to be in certain accounts and, and, you know, trust accounts and some of them draw interest and stuff like that. What's gonna happen down the road when, when that happens? Who's gonna be responsible for, for that type of money coming in and out?
At this point, we're looking to partner with the housing authority. It's, uh, it's, it's, uh, 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 it's allowable. It can be done. They currently process section eight vouchers and do that right now, that accounting right now. So we're using, we're, we're looking at that option first. If not, we'll, we'll simply go out to an RFP for a management company that does that type of thing. There are plenty out there that do that. But right now, we're looking to ob- obviously save costs and having good conversations with the housing authorities and their, and their legal team and think that we can use their services, that they're already doing this now to, uh, to handle the, uh, the property management aspect of rental housing for the redevelopment commission.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate that.
For, for many years, um, I've lived in New Bern. I've heard all about the need for affordable housing. We don't have enough. We can't see, we have argued this. We have beat this horse. We've worked so hard to get to this point to try to do something. We'll always find a reason not to do it, or why we can't, or what may get in the way. But let's look at why we should do it. I think we should, you know, give them enough rope and you can hang yourself. So this is monies that we had expected to have in this account. Let's give the redevelopment commission an opportunity to try to start doing something. We've talked about this. Two were blue in the face. They've had, they've got a plan. Let's let them try to implement some portion of this plan. And, and if it doesn't work, it won't be the first time we have fallen down, but we have to get further ahead than we are now. Because we're really nowhere now. We haven't built any housing. We don't, we see the need for it. We have people in need. And that's a priority. It's been a priority of ours for many years. Now, I know the mayor and I, we talked about, you know, affordable housing, the need for housing. And we've got to start somewhere. So I'd like to call the question there.
I have-
Well, Sabrina, hold on one second. I just wanna say that I, I understand where you're coming from. And, you know, I don't think anyone on the board is, you know, against the affordable housing. I think it's important for us as, um, to manage to continue to be transparent and, you know, really understand how this is gonna operate. Because I'm pretty sure in budget time next year, this is gonna come up for citizens to understand where this money is and why this money is what it is. So that's why we're asking questions, but-
And I, no, no, and I'm saying that's fine. I have no problem with those questions, Alderman Harris, but, um, I just, you know, we're gonna have questions as we go on. This is new territory for us. And we're all gonna have to sit down. We've, we've got trusted department heads. We have a, you know, chair. We, we have members sitting on that commission. And we all have to try to let, let us all do this job or these people we've entrusted to do this job. And then we ask the questions along the way. At the end of the day, the buck stops with us. We have to be accountable to this. And I, I'm just ready to let them try.
Well, you know, Alderman, um, Bingle, I'll agree with you. There's a overwhelming need for housing here in this city. But, you know, we've got to let our taxpayers know what kind of control, who's gonna be controlling of the monies? And who's gonna have the accountability of that money? And we as a board, I think it should come back to us at some point. And we're talking about taxpayers' dollars, giving it to the commission, how we handle that. So-
They have a plan. So they, they presented their plan to us. And do I agree that every decision they make may be the decision I would make? Not necessarily. But again, um, they've got to make some steps. And if it's a bad decision, it'll, you know, the money runs out. The money runs out. We don't have to put another dime or they may could use that to leverage with CBBG funds and other things, but they've got to start somewhere.
I understand, but I don't want it to come to a bad decision. We make a decision, they even feel like it's a bad decision that we made and there's monies, taxpayers' money spent. So, but I do agree that we do need housing and we got to start the commission off somewhere, but that was just my concern of control and available accountability of that money.
I wanna make sure, Jeff, that you're, um, describing this too. There's many facets of the redevelopment commission other than housing. I mean, they're looking at drainage. They're looking at cleanup. Right now, we've got Commissioner Morgan and Commissioner Wallace going to do this cleanup and, and trying to get out there and clean the neighborhood. Some of those funds may be spent there as well. So it's, we've got, uh, Commissioner Cho, uh, and Commissioner Young looking at healthcare needs. So some of those funds may be spent in there. So again, I wanna make sure, again, about transparency. These aren't four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars that we're gonna be spending solely on housing. This is a budget for, and correct me if I'm wrong. Aren't these gonna be used in different areas that you may need?
Well, I mean, we haven't got the money yet. I haven't talked about it. Uh, that's a conversation the board, the commission's gonna have to have, whether they wanna use this money specifically, uh, for income-producing endeavors or to delve off into do some other, other types of things. And that's, that's for the commission to work through.
I don't find any of the Board of Aldermen to attend the meetings because, um, there's lots of good information that they're sharing and doing at these meetings.
Quick question to you, Jeff.
Sure.
Uh, you have an area so far, these are just questions that came to me this morning, um, that, uh, how many houses or how many apartment complexes would you look at trying to develop? And the areas and where the people are gonna go? And, um, uh, how much money is gonna be used for this year? How much will y'all come back to get from us to complete it? Then they also came up with the contractor. The contractor's not gonna come in for free to build this project. They would love to take the project on. But the thing that it is, once they build it, can they sell that same house in that same location? You know, can you sell, can you build a house there, uh, in a, in a fifty thou- in a fifty thousand dollar area and put a hundred, fifty thousand dollar house in the same spot and get the same money for it? That was a question.
Yeah, there was a lot in there, Alderman Kinsey, yeah. Um, the first, I guess the first answer is this isn't, uh, the, the commission has no interest in, in being a developer. Okay, in flipping homes or any kind of market transaction at this point in time. Maybe down the line, as, as Alderman Bangle said, the commission gets more savvy, gets more cash flow from their original investments, um, that they'll be able to do things like that. But right now, that is not on the table whatsoever. Uh, as far as multifamily apartment complex, no, absolutely not at this point in time. Really looking to purchase, single-point purchase, rehab, and rent and begin probably phase two. Uh, after a few homes have been rehabbed and rented out and there's some cash flow coming back into the commission, start doing some land baking. Where, uh, the commission can then start, uh, parcelling, uh, land together to do larger types of development. Again, further down the line, as Alderman Bangle said, you need to take baby steps first, get this moving. Uh, get, you know, understand the process, get used to, you know, purchasing homes, getting them, uh, get, you know, understanding what the outfit is going to be like in these homes. You know, that's something that we're gonna be talking about.
Do you have any, in, 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 any particular group or organization in mind to come in to work with you on the building part?
Well, right now, you know, obviously, you know, uh, we have architects and very experienced builders on the commission. So we're having those conversations, I believe, Thursday is our first, uh, sit-down and talk about what the outfit's gonna look like in these rehab. What kind of products are we gonna use? They gotta be green. They have to be energy efficient. They have to be cost-effective. Uh, but, so those are the types of projects, uh, conversations we're having.
Are they gonna bill for profit or not?
No, again, like I said earlier, this is not a profit, um, really not in it to flip or to sell a house for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's not in the plan itself. Everything in the plan is talking about renting houses to low to moderate income individuals within the city.
Alderman, uh- Mayor, just a comment, recommendation. Comment is, we need to approve this. This is the quickest and easiest way for us to get the redevelopment commission some money so they can get up and running. We need to do that. My personal preference, hearing what I've heard tonight, I think eventually, when they get to a point, they've got some cash flow, they probably should have their own account with their own accountability and they should handle that on their own. But we need to prove this tonight so they can get going. My, my recommendation would be is, let's all be honest. When the redevelopment commission came and presented their plan, it was very thorough, a lot of details. But we spent hours that night debating on whether or not we're gonna put a road through Henderson Park. That's not the redevelopment commission's plan. My recommendation is in the future agenda, let's have the redevelopment commission come, present to the board and update. I've personally never been to a meeting. I've done that on purpose because we set that board up to have three ex officios from this board that cover that particular geography. I haven't gone there because I want that board to be autonomous and do what they need to do without any extreme oversight from this board other than the three ex officios. So that would be my recommendation is in the future, let's get somebody from the redevelopment commission to come give us an update and presentation.
Call a question.
I agree. Call the question.
Got a motion and a second?
Okay, this time we have a motion and a second. Is there a further discussion that haven't been called? So a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yeah.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Item number seventeen.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, item number seventeen is budget ordinance amendment for the FY twenty twenty-one annual adopted budget. On the ninth of June, twenty twenty, uh, the city entered into a ten-year lease agreement with Craven Community College, uh, for the city-owned property at one zero six and one fourteen through one twenty Rem Street. The old garage facility would be used to operate a diesel mechanic and heavy equipment operator workforce training center. Uh, the lease required an upfront payment of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from the college and annual payments of one dollar. Uh, those funds have been received and will be used by the city to upfit the garage facility. Uh, the budget amendment appropriates the funds designated for the improvements. Uh, additionally, the amendment creates a new special revenue fund to account for revenues and expenditures for the redevelopment commission. Uh, there's an initial budget, uh, that's recommended that be transferred. That's the four hundred fifty-five thousand dollars, which I think was the intent of the, the governing board, uh, to put that into the general fund, which will go into the department that we just created. Um, and, uh, we're happy to have any questions that you may have. There's memos included.
Okay.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the budget ordinance amendment for the, um, FY twenty twenty-one annual adopted budget.
Second. Motion, second. Is there discussion? Seeing none on a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris? Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Just go to appointments, Alderman Bingle.
None tonight, sir.
Alderwoman Harris, appointments?
None tonight, Mayor.
Um, Alderman Astor?
Alderman Kinsey? No, sir. Alderman Best?
None.
Alderman Odom?
Uh, yes, sir, I have one. I would like to appoint, uh, retired Sergeant Kevin Rock from North Carolina Highway Patrol to the vacancy on the civil service board.
Second. Have a second.
Good one.
Will you say?
Second, yeah.
Motion, second. Is there discussion? Seeing none on, favor the motion, say aye. I hope so. Say, motion carries.
Can I ask a question on the Dr. Stelma appointment? That's a board appointment. Do, does he want to be reappointed?
On the police civil service board?
No, no, no. Uh, Dr. Stelma for the-
That, the veterinarian.
I don't know if anyone's reached out to him.
I see. Okay, so it's just a matter. I, I didn't know if he just needed to be reappointed or not. Okay.
Can, can somebody reach out to him and see if he wants to be reappointed?
Sure.
I think chief, um, real quick, chief, uh, the, the appointment for Dr. Stelma, uh, for your vicious dog, um, ordinance, I think, uh, has he been asked to reconsider himself for his position or does he want to or?
I, I haven't asked him, so I don't know, but he has been working with us, so I would assume he would, but I can't confirm that.
Okay, you, you, I, I don't mind checking when, uh, unless, select, you wanna do it or do you?
Yes, and we, and I believe we're gonna have photo reviews to come that will address that. He's gonna be needed as the veterinarian, but not on the board that we're talking about.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other appointments? Attorneys report. City managers report.
Uh, I have nothing, but, uh, I think, uh, Alderwoman Harris is gonna bring something up and then I'll, I'll get a lot to follow up with at that point.
Okay. Okay, at this time, we're gonna go to new business, starting with Alderman Odom.
Um, Mayor, I, I have a recommendation. This is not my ward, but, um, having spent quite a bit of time at Lawson's Creek Park lately, I would support taking the speed bumps out of Lawson's Creek Park and putting them on Second Avenue and beginning they would do the fixture issue.
Okay, is it, um, that's on a new business? What kind of-
I would rather close the street, but, you know.
It's a start. It's compromise.
So this is the compromise. I, I say let's, let's talk to the residents and let's, uh-
I, I don't understand the foster. I don't know. Maybe you have some insight on the speed bumps at Lawson's Creek. I think it's done before you got here. I, I can't for the life of me figure that one out. So I'd make the motion to remove them. And if you wanna use them in second down the road, then you can, but I'll make a motion to remove them.
A second, yeah. Well, motion, second, discussion, uh, I'm not necessarily against-
I'd like to get some of them myself for Elizabeth Avenue.
I'm not, I'm not necessarily against removing them, but I would suggest that there are more user-friendly bumps than those things. Uh, if you, if you have a chance to use them. Okay, let's, um, let's have a roll call just starting with Alderman Bingle.
Okay.
Yes.
Alderman Bingle. Alderwoman Harris?
Yeah.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Well, you know, we don't do a lot of new business as per-
Just don't throw them away.
Don't throw them away because you're gonna probably get complaints and want them, but put back out there.
You're gonna want a different kind, but anyway. Um, anything else on city managers, uh, on new business, uh, Mr.?
No, sir, we got a lot accomplished with that tonight, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you did real good. Alderman Best?
Nothing.
Okay, Alderman Kinsey?
Yes, I'd like to get with, um, the public works director and look at some, um, intersections out through my ward.
Why don't we do that, uh, you know, we're gonna meet eight o'clock on Friday morning?
That's right.
You wanna do that? Is that good? Okay, we're gonna get together at public works at eight o'clock on Friday. Is that cool?
That's good.
What else you got?
That's it.
Okay, Alderman.
Thanks, sir.
Alderman Bingle.
Harris.
I'm sorry, Alderwoman Harris. Alderwoman Harris.
Right.
Yeah, go right here.
So, the only thing I have is, like Mark said, is, um, uh, Joshua from Palmer's Place reached out. Um, they are going to have some, um, uh, big wheeler trucks coming in and, uh, Friday and then the next couple of months with, um, a lot of pallets for home goods like, um, diapers and appliances and things like that, that they wanna be able to give out to the-
I, I say let's, let's talk to the residents and let's, uh...
I, I don't understand, the Foster, I don't know, maybe you have some insight on the speed bumps at Lawson's Creek, I think it's done before you got here, I, I can't for the life of me figure that one out, so. So I'd make the motion to remove them, and if you wanna use them in second down the road, then you can, but I'll make a motion to remove them.
Now, second, then. Well, motion, second, discussion, uh, I'm not necessarily against...
I'd like to get some of them myself for Elizabeth Avenue.
I'm not, I'm not necessarily against removing them, but I would suggest that there are more user-friendly bumps than those things, uh, if you, if you've had a chance to use them. Okay, let's, um, let's have a roll call, just starting with Alderman Bingo.
Okay. Yes. Alderman Bingo, Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Well, you know, we don't do a lot of new business, it's a spur.
Just don't throw them away.
Don't throw them away, because you're gonna probably get complaints in one of them, but put back out there.
You're gonna want a different kind, but anyway, um, anything else on city managers, uh, on new business, uh, Mr.?
No, sir, we got a lot accomplished with that tonight, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you did real good. Alderman Best?
Nothing.
Okay, Alderman Kinsey?
Yes, I'd like to get with, um, the public works director and look at some, um, intersections out through my ward.
Why don't we do that, uh, you know, we're gonna meet eight o'clock on Friday morning?
That's right.
You wanna do that?
We're good.
Is that good? Okay, we're gonna get together at Public Works at eight o'clock on Friday. Is that cool?
That's good.
What else you got?
That's it.
Okay, Alderman.
Thanks, sir.
Alderman Bingo.
Harris.
I'm sorry, Alderwoman Harris?
Matt, right?
Yeah, go right here.
So, the only thing I have is, like Mark said, is, um, uh, Joshua from Promise Place reached out, um, they are going to have some, um, uh, big wheeler trucks coming in in, uh, Friday, and then the next couple of months with, um, a lot of pallets for home goods, like, um, diapers and appliances and things like that, that they wanna be able to give out to the community, especially people suffering from COVID and the hurricane, and he reached out because they needed a location, um, and I had talked to you, Mayor, and a few other board members about how they felt about, um, using the old fire, fireman vans, um, and they've been corresponding with Scott and Mark, um, and I, you know, I'll let Mark, um, update you, but I think, um, mostly everybody I talked to was o- okay with it about doing the lease, and then they also don't have any problem with paying whatever utilities, um, they do, they just need the location, 'cause the truck is coming out on Friday, and they wanna be able to start, um, distributing some of these items out to the community.
How long will they need it? Up to a year. Alderwoman Harris, that was up, up to a year is what they were, were requesting, is that correct?
Yes, up to a year and then reevaluate, because this is something that's gonna be ongoing, Walmart and Am- Amazon have partnered with them, um, to bring this, these products down and to be able to serve, and it's just not, it's Craven County, Cold City, um, you know, it's, it's basically for the surrounding areas.
Okay, now, I, I'll wait till the manager's ready, does the board wanna give the manager direction on this to per, to prepare a memorandum of understanding that he would initiate, and let's proceed with doing this, is this, anybody have any problems with that?
Yeah, Mayor, while they're, they're...
Uh, so, um, a couple of things that I was not aware of, I need to check with, I know Foster, Foster has had some discussions with the, um, uh, county elections about potentially using that site for something, and so, I don't know if you have a contract with that or not, or whatever, but anyways, we, we could potentially talk to them about something, about their drive-up service or something, that they were running some issues about wanting to use that site, so weren't, was unaware of that, but, um, um, essentially, we have, um, the certificate of insurance has been provided, if the board so chooses that they wish to move forward with this. If the board wishes to move forward with the lease, um, I, I'm fine with them utilizing it prior to, as long as we have that certificate of insurance, which we do, as long as Scott says it's okay if they needed to come in there and utilize that space, but I guess now we need to find out with the county, uh, if they can find some other place or something, if we're gonna use that, because they're gonna be needed for a year.
Well, this is, this is the first we've heard of this, 'cause I think the staff has been aware that Alderwoman Harris has been working on this, so it's kinda new news to me, that, uh, the county deal, and I wonder if there's not room for, for everybody, uh, maybe if the storage is back toward the back, are you saying that the county wants some, probably some personnel in the front part to...
Let me have...
...accelerate, um, early branding?
That's correct, they wanted to walk up site, and, and we have Parks and Recreation since, since we were given that building a few years ago, we had been, uh, booking meetings and things like that in that building, so, um, and, and I just wasn't aware of, of what Alderman Harris was wanting to do, Alderwoman Harris was wanting to do, or we would've definitely tried to work something out.
But there could potentially be space, because they've got the back garage area could be used for meetings, and it's kinda, the door closes and separates, I think it's something, um, we're helping citizens in the community, it sounds like, um, is it Joshua, Alderman Harris?
Say that again?
Is it Jo- Joshua is the person you're working with at Promise Place?
Yes.
Yes, yes, and he, um, he was looking for me to update him, because they have the truck coming in on Friday, um, and they don't wanna lose out on, on the pallets coming in.
Right, do you think, I mean, he would be willing to, you know, share some space if needed in the back or whatever, does he need every inch of it?
I don't, um, I don't think he would have an issue, um, with, with sharing, and then, you know, as long as that just sells out in the lease, you know, their responsibility for what the utilities and stuff are, um, I don't think he's gonna have a problem, because they literally have nowhere else right now to bring this stuff, and the, the community really needs it.
They're gonna have a whole, uh, tough time unloading in the back part, they're gonna have to load that on...
It's fine, what I'm saying, you could probably put this up there, whatever in the back if needed, I mean...
Just work on it, I mean, we gotta work through that.
Yeah, I agree.
Could, could we just, as a board, give the spirit of support, and then let staff figure out, there may be an alternative location that we don't even know about, that they could use?
Well, if you gotta have something about Friday, though.
No, no, I think you're talking about for the county, right?
For...
Anything.
Any of them, let's just, if, if we were in support, let the staff figure out what the best location is for them to put, I mean, as long as we're okay with what they would recommend.
Well, I think the...
I agree with that.
Okay.
Okay, so, they're gonna need to unload Friday.
We're gonna, we're gonna give direction to staff to let them...
And you'll have it figured out by Friday. Make it happen.
And we don't know how much they're unloading, do we?
Um, the only thing I, I have is, um, will, will you guys continue to work with Josh, because I'll be, um, I won't be available, um, starting tomorrow through Friday, and I don't want him to lose out.
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be glad to check in on this, I think Alderman Bingo, uh, pretty busy with that building, have Alderman Astor, our chief Astor.
Well, I got a question here.
Any questions?
Yeah, for sure. Will this require, um, support from our police department? Because of this merchandise and having it stored there and...
Now, that would be, that's why they have the liability insurance, they would have to...
But I'm saying, for, because I know once, even during Hurricane Florence, we had stuff, yeah, we had, um, merchandise delivered into the city, it was chaotic and problems, I'm just...
Talking traffic-wise and stuff?
Yeah, I'm just asking.
You wanna be careful, because with the trains coming up and down, uh, people blocking, these are all just considerations, you're gonna have to work with...
Okay.
We'll let staff, I think staff needs to, these are good, that's a good issue, now that I think about it, you know, with the railroad tracks being there.
Take care of it, Mark.
We got a very large parking lot right beside us, and we can, I'm sure that then we can load them up.
Yeah, I'm hearing that we're supportive of helping and getting these needed supplies to our citizens, I just think the deep, the devil's in the details, and we'll leave that up to the, I pay people.
Alderwoman Harris, did you have anything else?
Um, nope, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Bingo.
Um, I really don't have anything, but in light of Alderman, um, Odom's, uh, motion this evening, I would like to revisit, uh, Second Street and, um, the neighbors there and what's happening with the traffic, uh, Matt, you know, before COVID, we were doing that study, and I don't know, did we ever finish getting that study, and, and we just, I just need to, we need to revisit it, and again, put in another plan, whether it includes the speed bumps or whatever, I can meet with the residents over there, but I need to have all the final information.
That study was completed, and you should have it copied in your email, from, from before, I mean, months ago.
Yeah, I agree, I read it, but, um, since he's opened the can of worms, I'm, we're ready to taste them.
It's a staple now.
That's it.